Yeah, I know.
Okay, so welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for nine AM Wednesday, August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. So one note, just acknowledging that for a disclosure for the record that this past Saturday, August twelfth, I was asked to attend the wildfire meeting being hosted by Senator Ron Wyden here in Bend, and I did meet him in Lepine earlier. As it turns out, Commissioner Chang was also at the meeting. Our attendance at the meeting was not prenoticed on the Board of Commissioners website, and since issues of county were discussed, I'm just coming forward with this information so that the record for our joint attendance can be fully disclosed. I did mention it Monday afternoon, just in passing as we were doing that. So that's kind of the official statement, as I say, it wasn't predetermined, but we were at the same meeting. So at this time, citizen input for any topic that's not on the agenda. We do have a public hearing today, and there's requests to speak. Is there anybody online with a raised hand feature? Okay, so seeing that, oh, sure.
You know, today, this morning, we see that the death toll in Maui is over a hundred and six, I believe. This is something I always worry about. I had a fire go around my house years ago, and three people died in that fire. But when you see the destruction, what happened in Maui, I really am reaching out to all the community to please sign up for alerts. Now, I know it's not a good idea to sleep with your phone right next to you, but just in case something happens and the wind is blowing. Clearly, it's when the wind is blowing makes things all different. But this is what you can do for Deschutes County is signing up, www.deshutes.org/nineoneone, and you can sign up to receive phone calls, text messages, emails, and more based on your location. So this is for the community. We have thousands of you signed up, but there are thousands more that should sign up, and I just cannot stress it enough. You need to be aware of what's happening. Yesterday, we had what? A twelve acre fire that was stopped, thank goodness. But you know, today we're dealing probably with the most, the worst smoke of the world. You know, our AQI was over five hundred in Sisters last night. So, but please do sign up for messaging. It's incredibly important. You know, you'll get the level one, two, three. There's just save a life, save your neighbor's life. If your neighbor isn't tech, you know, email savvy, whatever, just be sure and look out for other people, too. So that's my message today.
So along those lines, the State Interoperability Executive Council, which is something I've been, I'm involved in, we have meetings quarterly for the state. There is an effort called Alerts and Warnings, and there's a survey being done statewide for each county to be participating. And there's a statewide system and then also county system. So Deschutes County does have these systems in place, and there's a, you know, an active effort to make sure each county across the state of Oregon has this capability and capacity. So it's just good to know that it is being looked at at state level.
But what if you live in eastern Oregon, and there's, your service is pretty spotty?
Well, so it's being offered.
Are they gonna call people? I mean, will I dial their number with that message? Because I know I have gotten messages. I like my power company when we didn't have power for twelve hours the other day. When I called in, they actually knew who I was, and they said I wouldn't have power. So, you know, you've got to be engaged with your public safety services.
If we're talking about fire, the other thing to keep in mind is that there, there are the other three hundred sixty-four days of the year when the fire isn't burning, where we should be doing everything we can to make our homes more resilient, to implement defensible space around our homes, and to address fuel loads in, on the public lands and in industrial and large private forest land ownerships.
Great. Anything else? We see none. So at this time, consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. At this time, item number six, public hearing to receive testimony regarding proposed revisions to the county contracting code.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dave DeWell, County Council, for the record. What days the time and place set for a public hearing to consider changes to the county contracting code was generically known as the county contracting code, which is titled two point three six and two point three seven. This was primarily motivated by some changes in state law during this most recent legislative session. And as a result, the, the, the thresholds for procurement processes were, were raised. And internally, staff thought it was probably a good time to consider raising our contracting thresholds that various department heads, county administrator, board has authority to sign for. So the code provisions we provided, and we did provide you, and it's in the packet, a redline version of it, as well as a clean version, identifies what those are. One note of a change, I have a slightly revised ordinance document. We thought out of an abundance of caution and to keep things consistent that the operative date should be January first of two thousand and twenty-four. That's because some of the, the thresholds that were increased based on the House bill, that House bill doesn't take effect until January first of two thousand and twenty-four. So rather than have some portions take effect either immediately with an emergency or ninety days, we thought it was probably best for consistency to just have everything take effect January one of two thousand and twenty-four. So today, after your public hearing, if you were to close the hearing and deliberate, you could certainly do first reading today if you chose to, and we'd bring it back in two weeks for a second reading, but then the effective date would be January one of two thousand and twenty-four. I'm certainly available to answer or try to answer any particular questions you might have. Otherwise, I'd suggest you open the public hearing, call for any comments, and proceed from there.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Seeing none. This is a public hearing on the matter. So this is local contracting proposal of an ordinance. Is there anybody to speak on this matter? Is there anyone online? So we'll close the public hearing on this matter. So for discussion, raising some of the signature authorities, cleaning up the code. I just, I noticed it talks about instead of just contracts, contracts and or change orders, you know, so there's just kind of a cleanup in the code, puts the whole package together.
We reached out to all the various county departments, and in particular, the ones that are, are pretty heavy into contracting and procurement. And this was a consensus from, from those. We vetted it with the county administrator, and I believe he may have had one-on-one discussions with the board as well. So it's, it was, it was mostly a cleanup effort, but I think it was triggered by the timing of, I think it's Senate Bill ten forty-seven that increased the, the procurement thresholds. So it just seemed like a good time to, to do it all. I didn't expect that there be any public testimony necessarily, but obviously that's our process.
This is the process. So any discussion? Are we ready for deliberation?
We did just check to see if there was any public, public comment, right? Okay. Happy to proceed to deliberation.
Okay. So as I say, we did have a work session on this. It has been vetted. Thank you very much for the clarification for January first that aligns with the state law implementation that does set these, these signature authorities.
It makes it a lot cleaner that way than if we have part of the, the code amendments effective at a different date. People get confused, and it just seems like it'd be cleaner to keep it all on the twenty-fourth. And we've been operating with those signing thresholds for a lot of years, so a few more months, it wouldn't have been effective now anyway, till November, we in August. Yeah, it would have been November.
September.
Would have been September. Okay.
So, yeah, for deliberations, is there support for this? And then, but there's their motion?
Well, I'm glad you clarified that we, it's affect, you know, it should be effective January first of twenty-four. Because I'm reading this, we need to adopt this today and adopt it by emergency. And I'm like, okay.
Yeah, that was just an option we gave you. We, we put in a ninety-day adoption document as well as an emergency to give you folks the options. And there's some confusion in the way the enacting portion of Senate Bill ten forty-seven is written. I mean, there's arguably an interpretation that we could have gone with to say that we could do those increased thresholds right now. But I think rather than, than press that issue, we were more comfortable going with the January first date, which is identified in, in that bill as well.
I'd just say it's important to, to keep in alignment with state law. And when we're, when we have to unpack something already, then we might as well clean it up. So I'm in support of these changes.
Great.
So is that a motion?
Oh.
So I move. So is the ordinance number the same, or is there a different ordinance?
Same ordinance. It's two thousand and twenty-three zero one two.
So I, so I'm of support for ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one two, to be adopted effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four.
And this would be first reading by title only.
Oh, first reading by title only.
Yeah, we'll bring it back in two weeks.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing then, Commissioner Dare, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So this is ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one two, an ordinance amending Title two point three six and Title two point three seven, contracting of the Deschutes County Code. Second reading in two weeks.
Be back in two weeks.
Thank you. Item number seven, public hearing on a request to vacate a portion of Shible Road. This is continued from last week. Thanks for the flexibility there for the people that did testify last week. Yeah, so we got partial testimony last week, and this is the continuation.
Morning Commissioners, for the record. Cody Smith, County Engineer, Assistant Director to Deschutes County Road Department. As previously stated, this is the time and place for a continuation for a hearing regarding a proposed vacation of a portion of Shible Road. I am getting all set up here to share my screen, my presentation, and we'll get started. Is that, are we seeing that on the other screens here?
Not yet. So, so you're logged in and presenting from your laptop?
I am.
There we are.
There it is. Okay, so real quick, just the agenda for our hearing this morning. I'm going to provide some background information and staff findings. I'm also going to give staff's recommendation in this matter, and then we will, I'll ask the board chair to open the public hearing. Which technically has already been opened. I guess I'll ask the chair to continue the public hearing. But first here, just a more zoomed out map of the, the subject right-of-way in the area. So to the west there is Highway twenty, to the east is Old Ben Redmond Highway. The highlighted portion of Shible Road there is, Shible Road has a, a branch there with a north and south alignment. The, the subject right-of-way we're talking about today is that south alignment. And here's a more zoomed in map of that area. So the petitioners as abutting property owners are Jeff, Jeffrey and Catherine Gates, owners of Tax Law eighteen hundred, on Assessor's Map seventeen twelve five B, Marlene Wheeler Rennie, the owner of Tax Lot nineteen oh one, and joint owner of Tax Lot fourteen hundred on Assessor's Map seventeen twelve five B, and Terry Rennie, joint owner of Tax Lot fourteen hundred on Assessor's Map seventeen twelve five B. Additionally, we have a budding property owners who are not petitioners in this matter. That is John Kevin O'Leary, the owner of Tax Lot one hundred on Assessor's Map seventeen twelve five C, which is to the south of the subject right-of-way on the map there. So Shible Road, the right-of-way width is sixty feet. Shible Road exists as a local access road, which is a public road that is not part of the county maintained road system. The road, majority of the length of the subject right-of-way contains road improvements that primarily consist of pavement, various widths. None of that meets any, any of our current road standards in Deschutes County Code. Road Department's understanding is those road improvements were constructed and have been maintained by the budding underlying property owners. The public right-of-way was created in nineteen ninety-four by dedication deed. That's deed number nineteen ninety-four dash four six eight one eight. The chief petitioners, the gates, were one of several grantors with that right-of-way dedication. The Y intersection that exists within Tax Law eighteen hundred, the right-of-way for that intersection does not coincide with the as-traveled roadway. To remedy this, with this proposal, the chief petitioners have provided an offer to dedicate a new right-of-way to, that would coincide with the north alignment of Shible Road to continue, continue to provide public access to those properties north. The proposed vacation would effectively landlocked Tax Lot nineteen oh one, potentially depriving the owners of that property of access necessary to exercise, for the exercise of their property right. The submitted petition included a loss of access consent form signed by those property owners, and those property owners were also petitioners for the vacation. So the petitioners have provided the following reasons for the proposed vacation. So I'm going to read those reasons, and I'm going to give staff responses to those, those reasons that were provided. So number one was invalid dedication due to restrictions and reservations. Septic was installed and permitted by Deschutes County in nineteen eighty, repaired and permitted by Deschutes County in nineteen ninety-one. The deed of dedication was accepted in nineteen ninety-four by Deschutes County. The sixty-foot width encroaches upon the septic system that was approved by Deschutes County. So Road Department staff's response to this item. First, the, the dedication of the subject portion of Shible Road was valid, but it includes, it included a valid offer of the dedication by the owners and acceptance by the county governing body at the time of dedication. It does appear that a portion of the disposal field and reserve area for the subject properties onsite wastewater system may exist within the proposed vacation area. There are records of permits from, from nineteen eighty and nineteen ninety-one that exist within the property records. Additionally, it appears that an outbuilding and a portion of a livestock corral also exist within the proposed vacation area on, on that subject property. Staff want to note that while this situation does encumber both the public right-of-way and the underlying property, that doesn't mean that it invalidates the public road dedication that occurred in nineteen ninety-four. The second reason given by the petitioners, it reduces property values of the three tax lots requesting this vacation, which is seventy percent, seventy-five percent of the owners. The third reason given, where decades-old trees and landscaping would be lost. With both these items, staff's not going to address these statements as they're not necessarily verifiable, and they are not indicative of a necessity to vacate the public's interest in a property. The fourth reason given, since nineteen ninety-four, the county has never used, improved, nor plowed this road to our knowledge. Not once that we know of has the county plowed the snow during the major snowstorms of two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and nineteen. Staff response is, Road Department records indicate that no county-funded maintenance or improvement of the subject portion of Shible Road has ever occurred. However, staff would note that county-funded maintenance of a local access road is forbidden under state law, and that absence of county-funded maintenance is not indicative of a necessity to vacate the public's interest in a property. Reason number five, the southern portion of the road that is requested to be vacated has not been used by the general public and has only been used as access in driveway for tax lots eighteen hundred and nineteen oh one. Staff's response, Mr. O'Leary, the owner of Tax Lot one hundred on Assessor's Map seventeen twelve five C, has indicated to Road Department staff that he's, he has interest in using Shible Road for future access to his property to the south. Nonetheless, Road Department staff believe that generally the subject right-of-way has only been used to access tax lots eighteen hundred and nineteen oh one, as indicated by the petitioners. The primary access to Tax Lot one hundred, Mr. O'Leary's property, is from Old Ben Redmond Highway. Here's a, a map noting where that, that access location is. Mr. O'Leary applied for a driveway access permit for that, that location, I believe, last year, which was approved. A review of aerial maps going back twenty years or more indicates that that, that access to Old Ben Redmond Highway has existed in that location for at least twenty years and then probably longer. I would also note, too, that can't really see it up there on the screen, but there, Mr. O'Leary's property does also appear to have an access to Highway twenty. Road Department staff are not aware of the, of any of the specifics regarding that access location to Highway twenty for Tax Lot one hundred. Reason number six, given by the petitioners, traffic will increase, and no traffic study has been done that we know of. And reason number seven, safety of the young children living on Shible Road is a concern of the parents and neighbors. Staff response to both of these is that we won't be addressing this state, staff won't address this statement as it is not verifiable or indicative of a necessity to vacate the public's interest in a property. Reason number eight, it is not in the general public's best interest. Obviously, Board of County Commissioners, you'll be making that determination ultimately in this matter. Number nine, induced design dedication under false pretenses. We were told we could remove the southern portion of the dedication with a single item deletion. Staff response, so current Road Department staff have no knowledge of the requirements or the circumstances under which the subject right-of-way was dedicated in nineteen ninety-four. We haven't found any, I haven't found any record of this dedication coinciding, coinciding or being associated with any land use approval that occurred around that time. We, looking at the minutes for, for Board of Commissioners meetings, when the deed was accepted, didn't find any indication in, in the minutes for any of the meetings within weeks of this that even mentioned this, acceptance of this road dedication. So really not clear to Road Department staff why this, why this dedication occurred back in nineteen ninety-four. And then again, Road Department staff will note that Jeffrey and Catherine Gates, the chief petitioners and owners of Tax Law eighteen hundred, were granter, one of several grantors for the nineteen ninety-four dedication deed. And lastly, reason number ten, Tax Lot one hundred to the south will not suffer loss of access as the site address of six four one four five Old Ben Redmond Highway is permitted, approved, and installed. Staff's response is, the primary access to Tax Lot one hundred on Assessor's Map seventeen twelve five C is from Old Ben Redmond Highway, as previously discussed. In regards to utilities and service providers within the subject right-of-way, Avion Water and Central Electric Cooperative are both present within this right-of-way. Avion Water provided a, a signed consent form regarding the vacation, consenting to the proposed vacation. Central Electric Cooperative also provided a form consenting to the vacation, but subject to the underlying property owners granting an easement for Central Electric's facilities. Central Electric has also provided Road Department staff, excuse me, provided Road Department staff with indication that they have reached some type of consensus with those underlying property owners, and they are, they now consent to the vacation. With that, Road Department staff findings, the proposed vacation area was dedicated to the public by dedication deed recorded at the Deschutes County Clerk's Office as deed number nineteen ninety-four dash four six eight one eight, in, in compliance with ORS three sixty-eight, three twenty-six. The owners have a recorded property right that would potentially be deprived of access necessary for the exercise of that property right with the proposed vacation, have consented to the proposed vacation in accordance with ORS three sixty-eight point three thirty-one. I do want to note with that, when we're, we're considering that, that deprivation of access, we're looking at properties that would, that would otherwise be landlocked, not any property that's losing an access point where they may have other opportunities for access via other frontage to a public road. The petitioners who represent the owners of more than sixty percent of property abutting the subject right-of-way have submitted complete petitions and submitted the required fee. That's in accordance with ORS three sixty-eight, three forty-one C, three forty-one three, three forty-one four, and three fifty-one. As the petition for vacation does not include acknowledged signatures of owners of one hundred percent of property abutting the proposed vacation area, the vacation proceedings are subject to a public hearing, which obviously we are conducting right now in accordance with ORS three sixty-eight, three forty-six. The subject right-of-way does not appear to be necessary for current or future public use. Again, it appears to only be providing access to the, to the properties owned by the petitioners in this matter. And lastly, the subject right-of-way appears to coincide with onsite wastewater system components, an outbuilding, and other private property improvements for Tax Lot eighteen hundred on Assessor's Map seventeen twelve five B, which again, would, would encumber the right-of-way presently, and certainly would encumber it for any future roadway improvements. So with all that, the Road Department recommends as follows. First, that the proposed vacation is in the public interest, and that the Board of County Commissioners would adopt a pending vacation order, which will be Order number two thousand and twenty-three dash seventeen, that would be subject to the owners of Tax Lot eighteen hundred, the gates executing a dedication deed for the existing as-traveled north alignment of Shible Road that I previously highlighted. In regards to public comments, Road Department and the board received written comments submitted yesterday by Jeff Eager, attorney for John O'Leary. Also, during our hearing last week, the board heard verbal comments that were provided by Terry and Marlene Rennie, who are both petitioners in this matter, in support of the vacation. So as we move into the, to continuing the actual public hearing portion of this matter, just to let everyone know, if, if they intend to provide in-person verbal testimony today, that's a complete one of the blue signup sheets and submit that to the board's assistant. If they intend to provide remote verbal testimony, joining us online, to use the raise hand feature in, in the Zoom application, to be called upon and promoted as a panelist. So you can do that either by pressing the raise hand button in the Zoom application, or if you're joining us by phone, you can dial in by, by dialing star nine on your phone. Also like to let everyone know that the board chair is instructed in regard to time allowances for people providing testimony today. There'll be ten minutes allowed for the chief petitioner and the opponent abutting landowner, landowner in this matter. Five minutes will be allowed for the chief petitioner to provide a rebuttal, and then three minutes will be provided for all other testimony.
We'll do all other testimony before rebuttal, just in case there's more information.
Okay. So at this time, I'd request that the board chair continue the public hearing and call for testimony. And then after public verbal testimony has been given today, I, Board, Road Department's requesting that the board chair close the public hearing and that the board deliberate on the Road Department's recommendations in this matter. With that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and hand it back over to the board chair.
Okay, thank you very much for that introduction on the topic. So this is a public hearing on the matter, and it's a continuation. So at this time, we did receive some testimony last week, but at this time, this is the time for the applicant to be able to provide testimony. Here we go.
Good morning. My name is Liz Dixon. I am an attorney with the law firm of Dixon-Hatfield here in Bend, at four hundred Southwest Bluff Drive, Suite two forty, nine seven seven zero two. I am here today to represent chief petitioners, Jeff and Kathy Gates. Kathy Gates is here with me. Jeff is in the audience, the cowboy-looking guy back there. Kathy Gates is here with me. Jeff is in the audience, the cowboy looking guy back there. The the matter before you is one of those that's very emotional to the people involved. As evidenced by some of the arguments you've heard today, and they're good arguments. They're just not the arguments that address the standard that you have before you to make a decision. So respectfully, I know those are all concerns to people, but I'm going to speak to what you need to look at in order to make the call. The the two exhibits that I have presented to you are exhibit one is an annotated tax map of your county maps. Where I've taken the quarter section up above, which is the northwest quarter and a quarter section down below, which is the southwest quarter of section five, and put them together so that you can see where all the properties are in in the hope that it will help you understand the situation. The second exhibit that I have provided to you is also something that directly from your databases. It's from your dial database. The it's an aerial photograph because I I find it's helpful to look at both tax maps and aerials. The gates property is in the yellow outline up above. And if you look at it, you can kind of see where the right of way carves it up into four separate pieces. And then the piece below is the piece that's in yellow, which is respectfully to Cody, not one lot, but three owned by Mr. O'Leary. Because there is both the tax lot one hundred that has been identified before, but two additional very thin lots down below, which you can see on the tax map. The people who are in support of this application are Marlene Wheeler Rennie, which is Holly Hawk nineteen ninety four Living Trust Tax Lot nineteen oh one and Terry Rennie, which is BFF LLC Tax Lot fourteen hundred, which are both on the tax map that you have before you was exhibit one. The the person who has been most vociferous against the application is Mr. O'Leary, who owns tax lot one hundred, which is in the second quarter down below, as you can see. I have placed X's on the tax map showing the two locations that and these are approximate where Mr. O'Leary has access already to his property. One is on the western side to US Highway twenty, and one is on the eastern side to the old Ben Redmond Highway. If you take a look at the second exhibit, you will see I placed X's there, and those accurately reflect the white lines that show up in the aerial below. So these are probably going to be more accurate of the two since they're placed specifically. Mr. Smith identified this as well in his report. The the O'Leary property already has two accesses. Now, I don't know if the one to highway twenty is legal. I know the one to the old Ben Redmond Highway is because you approved it last year. That said, the standard in front of you is whether the vacation would be in the public interest. Respectfully, it doesn't really matter what it does to the gates. It doesn't really matter what it does to the O'Learys. It doesn't really matter what it does to anybody else specifically. What matters to you is what's in the public interest. And that has changed historically. I I read the road vacation cases and I go back to the late eighteen hundreds under the old hill laws. And what they were looking at in those days was money. Does does it benefit a particular group of people in terms of making an area open to development? Does it allow a new job provider to be in the location? And so if if money was there, they would dedicate a road or they would vacate a road, dependent upon how the how the money fell. I I think that's changed. I think our definition of public interest has broadened quite a bit. There were now we're looking at a lot more than just money. We're looking at things like is this the best use of the resource? Is there another thing that the resource could be used for that would be better than a road? And I think that's the issue that comes front and center here. In this case, we have a road that was dedicated approximately three decades ago and has never been improved, never been used by the public. Ne- never been taken advantage of in any way. So history answers the question, is it useful to the public? The answer is no. If it had been, it would have been used over the last three decades. In reality, we have the gates septic system there. We have a livestock corral. We have some the the allegation made by Mr. Eager was that the gates cut down the trees. In reality, CEC cut them down. But the point is that road has not been used as a road ever for thirty years. It is not historically beneficial to the public or the public would have used it. More importantly, I think what the gates are using the property for is in the public interest in that it is the correct use of MUA town property. Multi-use agricultural ten acre property is intended for the purpose of kind of quasi agricultural purposes. And they have placed a home there. They've got a septic system there and they've got a livestock corral there. They do do quasi rural agricultural activities on the property and that land serves that purpose. So what I would say is for the gates and the O'Leary specifically, that doesn't really matter to you, but in terms of public interest. Is this the highest and best use of this property? As a road that's dedicated that's never been used? No, it's not. The best use of this property is to let it go to the MUA purpose to which it is zoned so that it can be continued to be used for that purpose. Mr. O'Leary has raised a number of arguments in his prior submittals as well as in the one that Attorney Eager put into the record last night after five. I got it after five. I'm not sure when it was put in. And I think it's important to note that basically his argument is we never should have dedicated the access to Old Ben Redmond Highway and it was a mistake. Respectfully, I'm not sure how that applies. The fact is, the application was signed. It's in the record. I have it available to submit if you'd like to see it. And he has a he has an access that you permitted last year. More importantly, your code in seventeen forty eight to ten says you don't get to apply for a driveway permit on an arterial, which Old Bed Redmond Highway is. You don't get to apply for a driveway permit on an arterial unless you have no other access. He signed that application. He represented to you that he had no other access. So for him to come to you a year later and say, well, I I do have an access and it's this this piece of Shible Road. He has to pick one. And in reality, by filing the application with you that he has, he's already picked one. He's told you that he has access via Old Ben Redmond Highway. He doesn't need this access to be able to get to his road. In the interest of time, I'm going to close my comments now. I have my five minutes available for rebuttal, which should be more than sufficient. And I really appreciate your consideration. Kathy, do you have anything you need to say?
Thank you for your consideration. I just ask you to think about doing what is right. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
Kind of a broader question I have, and and maybe I should have asked Cody this is how do we verify whether this highway twenty access is legal or not?
Cody can answer the question. Frankly, it's it's not material as I see it to the to the facts in front of you and to the case you have to make. Even if there is no legal access to highway twenty, even if ODOT or the Oregon Highway Department never gave them a permit to access the highway. He still has access. And you permitted that in twenty twenty two. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us. Yep, the other party. Oh yeah, I guess I didn't. I do have the request to speak here, but we'll look, we'll go to two parties and then we'll make sure if there's anybody else to speak.
Over here, Mr. Chairman.
Anywhere.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you for your time this morning. I'm Jeff Eager. I'm an attorney for John O'Leary, who opposes the vacation of Shible Road. I'll talk for a little bit and then Mr. O'Leary is going to talk for a little bit. Welcome your questions afterwards if you if you have any. The the standard that you are to apply, there are actually two standards that you are to apply in determining whether to grant the vacation of Shible Road. The first is, as Ms. Dixon said, is it in the public interest to grant the vacation? We we say no. Chief petitioners say yes. I'll get into that a little bit more in a moment. But there is a second criteria criterion that would preclude you from granting the the vacation, which is if you determine that the access to Mr. O'Leary's property is if via Shible Road is necessary to Mr. O'Leary's property right in his in his parcel. So in terms of the whether it is in the public interest. Chief petitioners rely primarily on the fact that there the road hasn't been used in thirty years. What they what they are doing to maybe use a lawyerly term is trying to shoehorn adverse possession into the public right of way code, and that's that's not the way this is supposed to work. The 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 gates, the chief petitioners applied for and received the dedication of Shible Road back in nineteen ninety four. I have included that as an exhibit to the submission I made yesterday. And they at some point thereafter began just blocking the roadway. And there there's a gate on one side of their roadway, pardon me, of their property, and then there are trees that are fallen, whether by CEC or someone else on the roadway itself. Blocking access, blocking use of that roadway. And now having having blocked use of the roadway. The chief petitioners are here asking you to give them the roadway that they dedicated to county taxpayers back to them. And that we don't believe is in the public interest. It's not in the public interest to to reward a party who has chosen to block a a public right of way that they have dedicated to the county. It's not in the public interest to try to require Mr. O'Leary to use an access from either Old Ben Redmond Highway or the or highway twenty, the latter of which is not a legal access point whatsoever. It's there's a gate on highway twenty merely to allow fire access in an emergency. The Ben Redmond Highway access point was accidentally obtained. And and yes, the the application was submitted. We are not saying it was not. It was based on some false information or a false belief that Mr. O'Leary's Realtor at the time had about what was required to get an address. They were trying to get an address for the listing. And in that process came to believe that they needed to apply for a driveway permit, in part because they weren't able to get to the parcel via Shible Road because it was blocked by chief petitioners. So it and furthermore, it would not be in the public interest to require missed the visitors to Mr. O'Leary's property to use either highway twenty or Ben Redmond Highway. As evidenced by their names, they are highways, high rates of speed, adding another access point to those to either of those highways is not in the public interest. Your road staff surmise that they they weren't able to tell why Shible Road was dedicated back in nineteen ninety four. And records are incomplete about that. I would surmise based on the map that it likely was approved and dedicated and received by the county to provide access to Mr. O'Leary's property. It it dead ends and butts into his property at the southern terminus of of Shible Road. There, Mr. O'Leary's father reserved an easement adjacent to that access point as though at least he was assuming that was going to be at the time a the point of access to the property. And so the the Shible Road access giving it back to to the giving it back to the chief petitioners at this point just is not in the public interest. It is it is there for a reason. They dedicated it to the county for a reason thirty years ago. Mr. O'Leary wants to use that as an access to his property. They have blocked access to his property via that public right of way. And and it's for that reason not in the public interest to vacate the roadway. Briefly, in my with my letter, there's a map that shows an alternate possible route for Shible Road down the east side of Chief Petitioners property that that may be a less burdensome thing for them to use rather than the the kind of snake that goes through their property right now. Mr. O'Leary would be happy to work with chief petitioners on in the county on moving the right of way there if that was in the interest of chief petitioners and in the county, but as is with this vacation pending in front of you. It's it's just not in the public interest to grant that. No. Give the rest of my time to Mr. O'Leary.
My name's John O'Leary and I was born and raised in Bend. My parents purchased the acreage between highway twenty and the old Ben Redmond Highway in nineteen fifty nine, nineteen sixty from Ole Grub, who was Tshuts County Commissioner at the time. And I'm against the vacation of the public road to the middle of the property known as Shible Road. The gates have blocked the legal entry to my property with logs, tires, irrigation equipment, a trailer and other items. Mr. Gates approached me when I was working near the entry about vacating the public right of way. I told Mr. Gates, my attorney said not to sign anything since it's my legal access to the property. Mr. Gates was not happy and became visibly upset and said he would not let anybody down this roadway and would block it farther up. The real estate agents felt it was necessary to get a temporary address on the old Ben Redmond Highway because of Mr. Gates threats and to avoid any confrontation until the legal access was opened up. Shelley Ray of Engels and Volker went to the road department and told them of the problem we were having and wanted just an address to the property on the old Ben Redmond Highway because of the threats Mr. Gates made if anybody used the legal access. The road department gave her the forms to fill out and she reiterated all we wanted was an address, not an access. Shelley and I filled out the forms and she took them back to the road department. Again, she reiterated to the road department that all we needed was an address and not an access because we already have a legal access to the property on Shible Road. I in turn called community development and asked them, okay, if I have a piece of property that borders the old Redmond Highway and I just want an address to list the property. Half the property is in sagebrush. The other half is in pasture. She in turn asked me if the property is being developed and I said, no. We park out front in an alcove and walk onto the property. She said, I can give you the address over the phone. Which surprised me, but I thought that would be great. But we had already applied for that through the road department, which was a mistake. The road department never told Shelley Ray that by getting an address on the old Ben Redmond Highway that it could eliminate your chance of getting an actual legal access down Shible Road. I went to the road department to talk about my legal access down Shible Road. The road department even admitted that Shible Road access is the best access to my property because you can go south, you can go east and you can go west onto the property. And why in the world anybody is saying that I want to develop the property is completely wrong. The property, if I pass away, goes to my nephew who wants to build a house on the property. And we've had it in our family for so many years. I don't want it. If it doesn't sell as one parcel, I don't want it broken up. The road department admitted that Shible Road access, like I said, was the best access to my property because you can go southeast, west. However, they said you have an access out front. And I said, we never had or wanted an access out front. We just wanted an address to avoid gates threatening and harassing people trying to come down. the access. Right now, we park in the alcove where the gate is. However, there wouldn't be a gate there, but Central Electric and Ben Broadband need to get in there to go along the northeast portion of the property in the northeast corner for a transformer pole. And it's located on a bro- rock bluff that affects all of the line going down there. Both companies have locks on the gate and do not drive down the field. To service Gates and other petitioners, they come through the gate off of Highway twenty-six, which is not a legal access. We put that in there for emergency service. Everyone that is uh, petitioning to this, vacate this road, should be thankful to my father who granted the service easement for the Gates and other petitioners for Ben Cable as well as Central Electric. He didn't have to do that down his property on the north end. And I thank you.
Thank you very much. So yeah, we have your written testimony also from the uh, the paperwork. So uh, yeah, at this time we'll ask for anybody else to uh, testify on the matter. So I have two more. So Alfred Heston and Peggy Lee Combs.
Yes. You want me to?
Sure, anywhere. All three mics work. Yep.
Oh, okay. Do I need to stay by the microphone or?
Uh, nope, just close, yeah, just generally towards it.
Uh, well, first of all, I have uh, pictures and so forth to submit for the record.
Well, I'm Peggy Lee Combs. Here to speak for John O'Leary. Uh, I have pictures uh, about the uh, it is a picture of the public notice that was posted for this hearing and for the application. And uh, I wanted to point out that, that the notice was incorrect. It shows the roadway not going all the way to Mr. O'Leary's property when in, in fact, it actually does. Rural and Francis O'Leary purchased their property in nineteen fifty-nine and they've lovingly cured for and improved and beautifully maintained it all these years. And of course, it's now owned by John O'Leary, their son. Uh, at some point, the people that owned the property adjacent to the north on Tax Lot eighteen hundred, which is now owned by the Gates, uh, built their home on the wrong side of the property line. So Mr. O'Leary had to give up a large strip of land on their north edge uh, so that the encroaching home could be made legal at the time. And uh, they have a map showing that strip of land that was given up. Yellowed in on this snap. And um, at that time, because Mr. O'Leary was giving up the strip of land for their home, Mr. Shible made sure the public roadway being dedicated called Shible Road did extend all the way to the O'Leary property. It was also clear that Mr. Shible intended this to be a public roadway because he dedicated sixty feet to the road, which is the requirement for a public roadway. He didn't give thirty, forty or fifty, but a full sixty foot roadway. Uh, now to add insult to injury, the current owners of the property, the Gates, want to take the public roadway away from Mr. O'Leary and the public. If the county allows this to happen, in my opinion, it would be a sad day because if it could happen to Mr. O'Leary, it could happen to anybody. Um, the Gates purchased the property in nineteen ninety-four for a hundred and five thousand dollars. And it should be noted that in nineteen ninety-four, you could purchase a home in Bend in town on a small lot for a hundred and twenty thousand or more. Um, I know that because I purchased a home in northeast Bend myself that year. Since the Gates' property is on about four acres in such a desirable location, they made a wonderful buy. And it's very likely that they would have paid a much larger amount if the roadway did not go through their property and the buildings were not so close to the property line. However, they purchased the property knowing that the road existed and it was evidently part of their purchase agreement that they would sign the dedication document, giving the roadway to the public. They did indeed sign the road dedication that very year. In fact, their signatures were the very first signatures notarized on the document.
Uh, yeah, we had three minute testimony for everybody and it's okay to go over a little bit, but let's generally try to keep it on track here.
And I think everybody can understand why the applicationers would, would want to gain that property back for free, but Mr. O'Leary's done nothing to deserve this. It would be simply favoring the desire of one property over another for personal gain. They were ve- they were required to give valid reasons as why to show it was in the public's best interest. And it just seemed like they couldn't find any good reasons. Um, I'd like to point out that Mrs. Gates was a local Bend Realtor for many years. Uh, very good Realtor and exceptional at her job. And since then, she's worked for a local title company. So their assertion that, that they dedicated the road uh, by mistake and thought they'd be able to take it back is just couldn't be true. I think all adults know that when they sign and notarize a document, it's legal and binding. And um, certainly in, in their case, I believe that they knew that.
So yeah, thanks for the testimony. Is that written up also? Is it written testimony that you can provide us?
Yes.
So yeah, let's take that for the written. So uh, my question, it's for you and maybe for anybody else is, what did this look like? I mean, was this uh, the, the historical road, you know, the dirt road that maybe wasn't documented before nineteen ninety-four for access to that area? And I don't know if anybody has this, the information during this public testimony.
Uh, to my knowledge, the um, they put the roadway where it already existed.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Uh, and yeah, I have a copy of the road maintenance agreement, so the people there, including the Gates, certainly know that the county didn't plow or maintain that road because they have their own private road maintenance agreement. And I've included a copy of the dedication to the county and uh, some, some other maps for you to review. And I've also included some uh, photographs of where the roadway is blocked. Uh, the last thing I'd like to present is the irrigation map uh, showing where the irrigated land is on the O'Leary property and the adjoining properties. And um, the, the front of the property is all irrigated. So that's why Mr. O'Leary doesn't like to access the property there too, is because you'd have to drive over irrigation pipe. And uh, if anybody were to ever build a home on the property, they would build it further back on one of the rock outcroppings where it wasn't irrigated. Because you can't build on top of the irrigation water and they, they would want.
Thank you.
Be there for a view, so.
We were just trying to set a little pace for this, uh, so thank you very much. So, uh, Mr. Heston.
Uh, before I start my testimony, I'd like to say I agree with you and support your uh, previous comments regarding fire safety. My name is Alfred Heston. Uh, thank you commissioners for allowing me to testify against a proposal to vacate a portion of the Shible Road. I'm asking the, the board not to accept the proposal for the good of Deschutes County citizens, keep the public road. It is in the best interest of the county not to vacate the road because of public safety and protection of citizen rights. The road department's report findings and conclusions are incorrect. They assert the main access to Lot one hundred is the old Ben Redmond Highway. This is incorrect. The only feasible access is Shible Road. This point Mr. O'Leary made to Mr. Cody multiple times. To vacate the road would deprive the right of access for the exercise of his property right. There is no access from uh, any other side that would provide the necessary access. The road department asserts it's in the best public interest to vacate the road. Nowhere in the road department's report are there any statements to port, to support this conclusion. They do not supply any arguments why keeping the road is a negative to the county. Um, as local access, it is no cost to the county. They do not provide any argument or finding why giving up the road benefits the county. The Shible Public Road benefits accounting because it improves public safety by dramatically reducing fire department response time to the properties on Shible Road, including like night, lots nineteen oh one and eighteen hundred. There are three gates on the property, but only one viable access point to the property. Gate one, McKenzie slash McKenzie Benz Sisters Highway. That's a fire department gate, quote unquote. It gives a fire department quicker access to the O'Leary property and the adjacent properties. Public access is unlikely because it is grant, it to be granted because it is off a state highway. Gate two, old Ben Redmond Highway. Quote, utility gate, company gate. The electric and cable companies use this gate to, to service a joint, uh, to serve it, to maintain the equipment which serves adjoining properties north, north of his property. Utility trucks are not allowed to cross the field. They only drive on rock along the highway fence. The utility companies have locks on the gate. There's a parking pad for public safety. It is not an access. Their planted grass field with irrigation pipes prevents viable access from the old Ben Redmond Highway. The irrigation pipes would be destroyed. Everybody walks. In nineteen oh three, my children, three and five year olds, we walked from the highway. We don't, we're not allowed even with young children to go over there. It's not been an access. Shible Road. The, it's in the middle of property necessary for O'Leary to exercise his rights to access both east and west sides of the property. The, uh, as has been re- I'd like to reemphasize, the road department stated was the best place to access the property. Public safety. Fire department, the Shible Road access would allow quick response by the fire department. It would cut time in half because they would not have to go all the way around to the Bend Highway. They could enter gate one and drive across O'Leary property to gate two. Future public use. The road is necessary for, for public use, especially if the property to be developed similar on how tax lots nineteen oh one, fourteen hundred and eighteen hundred were developed. Um, when the declaration was granted, it was deemed necessary by the county and nothing has changed in those years. The vacation, the vacation of the Shible Road denies O'Leary access to a recorded property right. It would eliminate his access to the submit, to an easement on Tax Lot eighteen hundred. This is a violation of O R S three six eight point three three one.
So I have your written comments and as a say we're.
Just saying thank you now.
Okay, very good. Okay, I was just. There you go.
Um, please, please stop this taking which will harm Mr. O'Leary and other Deschutes County residents. Thank you commissioners for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the testimony. So those were the written requests to speak. Is there anyone else to speak on this matter? Is there anyone online? So we don't see anybody else in the room with either. Uh, is there rebuttal on this? And then questions from the commissioners too. I can see this is, uh, we may want to get engaged with some of this.
So kind, just pass these down. And I only have one copy of the road maintenance agreement, but I'm submitting it to the record as exhibits fix. Thank you. Good morning, Liz Dixon again on behalf of chief petitioners. Um, Jeff and Kathy Gates. A lot of new information has come into the record in this short creative time that we've had before us. I will do my best to get through it in five minutes. You have before you some additional submittals, but I wasn't sure if I was going to need um, give you these as well. I've submitted into the records Exhibits three, four, five and six. Um, Exhibit three is a development document record for Mr. O'Leary's Tax Lot one hundred. So you can see the total number of development permits that have been applied for the O'Leary property. The first is the driveway access in twenty twenty-two and then a legal lot of record verification immediately thereafter in twenty twenty-two, and that's it. Um, so that gives you a sense of kind of what's been developed on the property historically. Um, Exhibit four is a little more complicated. It is the actual driveway access permit packet that's in your county records. And it includes um, in the front, the application that was submitted, including his signature. I referenced it earlier, but now you have it in the record proved. Um, and at the very end is the code that applies, which says that he can't do that unless he has no other access, which I referenced earlier as well, but now you have it in the record. Exhibit five that I've provided to you is the road maintenance agreement map. And this was provided by First American Title who Kathy works for. Got to, got to say that upfront. I don't think she bent the lines, however. Um, and what it shows is who the property owners who are benefited and burdened by the two thousand four road maintenance agreement uh, recorded at two zero zero four one six nine five five, which you have before you was Exhibit six, but I only had one copy. I apologize for that. I didn't think I'd need it. Um, I provided it to Jeff Eager last week, so he has it as well. The, the road maintenance agreement is now front and center because it's been raised and it's important because it shows who the property owners are who benefit from Shible Road. Because Shible Road was put together with the road maintenance agreement in mind. These are the people who take care of it. These are the people who benefit from it. Please note, Tax Lot one hundred is not on that map. It is not outlined. Tax Lot one hundred is not benefited by Shible Road. It is not benefited by the road maintenance agreement and has no part to this process based on the road maintenance agreement that you have in front of you. All right, now to specifics. Um, we're getting into the weeds here and I'll try to be careful about what's pertinent and what's not to help you sift through it. But the first thing is, um, I want to make sure that you know that the Gates have committed that they will make all dedications and easements necessary to uh, Deschutes County, to the Rennies and to the utilities so that the Rennies have access to their property as well as um, Deschutes County having the ability to put that hook in to take Shible Road up to the north and the utilities will be able to get in as well. And they commit to that now before you on the record. Um, there was a argument made about notice that it was improper. Um, there was nothing said about the notice not serving its intended purpose, that there was constructive and actual notice served to the properties involved. I don't think it's relevant, but it's a procedural issue and so I needed to address it. The um, the, the, the access necessary to O'Leary, they're claiming that um, there's a shoehorn of adverse possession here and respectfully, I have to disagree. Adverse possession is a serious matter and it has not been claimed and we are not trying to assert it, nor are we trying to assert a prescriptive easement, which would be the more appropriate claim here. Um, in reality, we're saying this is, people are wondering if this road was used, if this road is in the public interest. For thirty years, it hasn't been used. And that's just history. That's not somebody trying to claim they have the right to claim adverse possession against the county. That's not even legal. So the point is, the gate that was referenced has been there since nineteen ninety-four. And yes, the gates put it up. Yes, the gates put up the gate. But more importantly, Shible knew they put it up. Shible approved of them putting it up. The concept was that it needed to be there. So for Mr. O'Leary, they now claim that the gate is some evidence of refusing to let him use the property. The facts speak otherwise. Mr. Shible had no objections then. He approved of the gate and that should be the end of the matter. Um, there was an argument made that Highway twenty was a fire access gated thing that was never used and that the old Ben Redmond Highway miss, was a mistake for an address only. Respectfully, the map that I submitted into the record is Exhibit two and the even better map that Cody put in to the record with his. That Cody put in to the record with his remarks shows clearly that there is a worn road trail. That goes out Highway twenty and goes out to the old Ben Redmond Highway and those worn trails. That those roads speak for themselves. They show that both are used, both work and. They, and they exist. So.
Liz, I just want to just acknowledge, I mean, we're slipping past all the times here today, and I don't want to do any procedural problems on either side. So. I mean, are, are we okay with how this is going today? And how do I acknowledge that legally? I just seen a nodding of a head here. I just don't want a procedural problem. Okay, this is okay. Thank you.
Um, the, the Shible Road. Rationale, the way it was explained to me and my exhibit one describes it pretty carefully. If you look at the tax lots in exhibit one. You will see that those tax lots are possible because of Shible Road. And the idea is that Shible Road was, was. Put in place by Mr. Shible because he had a vision for development in the area. And without that road, that development could not have occurred. Most of it was to the north. Not very much of it was to the south, but the tax lot speaks for, the tax map speaks for itself. With regard to Mr. O'Leary's specific comments, um, he said that a threat by Gates was made to him. Mr. Gates denies that, but more importantly, it's not relevant to the matter before you. He said that the only reason he did it was because he needed a dress. The roadway shows otherwise. He's using the roadway a lot. It's worn down. In conclusion. Your job today is determine if the vacation of this portion of Shible Road is in the public interest. We have shown you that the public has never used it for thirty years. That it serves no purpose. By freeing it up, making it available to the MUA purpose that is the underlying zoning. It allows the road and the roadway to be used in the manner which it was intended. And we ask that this board approve it on that basis. Any questions?
Any questions or thoughts? So.
So, so you did, you did say that um. There would be access provided to the Rennie properties.
Yes, they will provide an easement. We already have that.
So will that use basically this first part of this segment of Shible Road that we're talking about, or will that come? From a different direction.
It'll, if you look. I'm sorry, it's hard to do this when we're talking on maps, but if you look at the Y of Shible Road, when it where it comes in off old Ben Redmond Highway. The idea is that it'll go to the, it'll go to the north at that Y. But there will be an easement provided to tax lot nineteen oh one. That will go through eighteen hundred in the current driveway down to nineteen oh one so that they can get in.
So it'll come in the northeast corner of. Of um, of the Rennie.
No, no, it's more, it's parking. Well, no, it's, you're right. It go, it's about a third of the way down the. Uh, property line, the northwest property line between nineteen oh one and eighteen hundred. You see where there is currently that where the driveway currently kind of hooks over into the Rennie property.
Here on the map, you can see.
You're, you're talking about exhibit one then?
I, I am, or if you like, you can, you can look at exhibit five, which is the road maintenance agreement. That's this one. This is exhibit five.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Okay, so if you.
So the piece of right away that we're talking about, you would still use the first. Twenty percent of that?
Maybe. Any other questions?
No questions at this time.
Will it be possible for that picture to go into the record, the big one? Okay. Okay, good. I just wanted to see it like closer.
Thank you for your consideration.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
This has been the public hearing on the matter. I want to thank uh, the parties for being involved. Uh, and at this time, uh, if it's the right step here, we'll close the public hearing portion of this matter and we've got some. Lots of good information in papers at this time, so. Uh, what's the will of the board? I'm, I'm kind of digesting still myself.
I know, I think there's a lot and there's a document that we haven't been able to see because there's not a copies.
Maintenance Agreement.
I don't know. Can we come back in a week and? Determination?
I also wanted to ask legal, um, what are. What, what kind of requirements we have to resolve this, this matter and make a decision? Um, you know, when, when we hear, you know, other kinds of quasi-dual land use matters. Um, there's, you know, if we, if we don't decide or if we decide a certain way, there's, there's. Always a risk that someone will say, you know, you interpreted your code wrong. Uh, in, in, in this case, I mean, is it, is it similar or I, I mean. And we're talking about this standard of, you know, is this in the public's interest or not, which is uh. Is a little bit unwieldy and vague um, as well. So I, I did. You know, I, I, I would like to understand better what um. You know, what is required of us in, in, in um deliberating on this issue.
And I think um, the opponents laid it out for you as far as there is the first component, as far as whether it is in the public interest, and I think it's fairly. There's a lot of discretion, I guess, given to the board in determining that. Um, as to the second one and whether or not it, it really eliminates uh, the only access point to a particular parcel. So that would be the other factor to consider. And obviously, there's been testimony on whether or not that access, that alternative access is available for the property.
I, because uh, you know, I, I have to say on, 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 there are a lot of really important. Um, concerns and interests at stake here. But, you know, to the first standard of, you know, is this in the public interest or not? Um, many, many of the concerns uh, expressed by. The applicant, by the opponent are, are, uh, they're, they're real concerns, but they are very individual concerns and I'm. It's, it's hard for me to kind of put the lens of, you know, is this a public, a question of public interest or not? Um, to uh, to, to these matters that are extremely important to individual property owners, but. I don't really. Uh, have a good sense of how important they are to the, to the general public. So, you know, there's, there's that aspect of this. There's also um. You know, you know, this is a, this is a local access road. This is not a, um, we're, we're not talking about. Uh, pieces of the county road system or, you know, the county all, you know, owned and, and, and maintained road system. And when, you know, when we talk about local access roads, uh, local access roads exist. Uh, to serve a certain sets of, of private property owners. So I, I, you know, on, on. You know, uh, for, for many aspects of local access road um, decision making. What, what's most important is, is that we come up with something that's workable for the private property owners. That are on that local access road and it's. Uh, again, not necessarily a matter of, of public interest. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with. You know, how to, how to think about this and, you know, whether I even think it's appropriate for the Board of Commissioners to be. The body that is, that is trying to resolve this issue.
Well, so there is a recommendation and uh, I, I will acknowledge, as I say, we learned when we opened up the public hearing last week that all this is a hot one and. You know, we had people uh, dialing in remotely as we got started. So, I mean, I want to thank everybody's participation. And the recommendation from staff is a starting point for a conclusion. So. Uh, you know, from my point of view, is there justification to go a different direction from that conclusion? You know, just as a, a starting point. For deliberation. So I'm trying to get words out here so everybody can hear this also. Uh. Do you support bringing this back? I guess it's kind of the step right now, or, or do you have some clarity? Or deliberations?
I, I mean, it did. Um, there's, there's part of me that would prefer to. Send this back to this set of landowners to try to sort something out amongst themselves. Um, and, and for us not to continue to hear this or to, to go to deliberations on this, but. You know, that's part of why I was asking whether um, we, what our obligation is in, 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 in proceeding with this, with this process, but. Uh, but, you know, also, if it is our, if it's our responsibility to, to reach a conclusion on this, then. I, I could, I could go to, you know, if it's our responsibility to reach a conclusion on this, then I, I. Am comfortable going to deliberations now or. Or next week.
Board Chair, if I may, uh, just going to answer uh, or to respond to what Commissioner Chair is saying. Um, uh, under ORS three sixty eight, three fifty six ultimately. Uh, well, I'm, I'm just going to read it to you. So after considering matters presented under ORS three sixty eight, three forty six and three sixty eight, three fifty one. Accounting govern, governing bodies shall determine whether a vacation of the property is in the public interest. And shall enter an order or resolution granting or denying the vacation of property. So in, in response to what you're saying, ultimately, the board does need to deliberate on this and does need to make a ruling.
And I'm sure, yeah, both parties want clarity on this and we'd be the decision body on that. That's. So thoughts about the proceeding with deliberations now or to.
For next week, I actually tried to help solve an issue in my neighborhood. Couple of months ago and I found it was incredibly difficult. So, you know, just as a.
Okay.
An mediator. Um, I do have a question though, Cody. The Gates property without all the easements through it, is that like a ten acre piece? Where that eastern, where the road grows, goes through? I mean, I'm just looking at uh, Ms. Dixon's exhibit number two. And I'm just one, I'm just um, wondering.
Uh, Commissioner, off the top of my head, I don't know the exact acreage of their. Their property gross or net acreage. Um, they, they might be able to answer that question for you right now, but. I could, I could get that information for you certainly, but.
Yeah, now let's get the information.
We, we can enter into the record that the title company has determined that it would be five point six acres. If that part of the road were vacated.
Five point six.
Approximately.
Okay, so that's for everybody's information. Is there another comment? Okay, so, very good. Okay, so uh, I support uh, digesting this a little bit, bringing it back. Uh, and we've acknowledged that a decision will be made by this, this body, uh, putting direction to this matter.
The, but I mean, I, I'm. There's, there's a, there's a lot of history. Among, amongst uh, these landowners uh, who are, are parties to this um. Uh, this issue. And um. You, you know, in. Uh, you know, I'm not a legal expert, but it does seem like in some settings, uh. Giving people direction that they, they need to mediate something is, is appropriate and, and. Is there, is there any mechanism like that in, in this situation?
Not for this type of process.
So deliberations will be in one week on this matter. I want to thank everybody for. For bringing it to us and sharing the information, a lot of paperwork associated with it. So we'll do our homework and bring this back. Sure. Hearing is closed. Yeah, so hearing is closed on the matter, so no more input. Uh, so is this, that's what I was kind of referring to is the fact that the paper provided today and the testimony provided. Today and last week will be the content of this matter. In front of the board. So thank you very much. Sorry we didn't get to a decision today, but now we have a good feel for what's going on here. At this time, item number eight. This is a proposed first reading for ordinance number. Or an ordinance for a Griffin Plan Amendment. And zone change. Okay, welcome.
Hello. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Rachel Vickers, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. Um, the item before us today is a first reading for an ordinance. That would be. Um, approving a plan amendment and zone change for a forty acre property east of Bend. The file reference number is two four seven. Dash two two dash zero 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 seven nine two dash P A. Comma, seven nine three dash Z C. The application is to rezone the property from exclusive farm use to multiple use agricultural. And a concurrent change in a comprehensive, in the comprehensive plan designation from agricultural to rural residential exception area. The first require, required hearing was held before hearings officer who recommended an approval to the board and the board had their public hearing on May thirty first. And commenced deliberations on June twenty sixth. At the conclusion of the deliberations, the board voted to unanimously approve. This application. Staff and legal counsel then prepared the materials in front of you today. The ordinance and exhibits were created to best represent everything in the record and the outcome of the board deliberations. In your packet is a draft ordinance. Is a draft of ordinance two zero two three dash zero one eight with exhibits. These materials have been reviewed by planning staff as well as legal coun, council. And today's meeting is the first reading and I will come back in two weeks on August thirtieth for a second reading. Now concluding this summary, staff is available for questions. Um, and if there are not any questions, the board may, the board may approve the ordinance as written.
Thank you very much. Any thoughts or proposals, edits or a motion?
Okay, I, I just have a question because we approved this um, on the twenty sixth of June, you said?
Yes.
But it's taken like almost two months to come back then?
The twenty sixth of June.
That's right.
Oh, yes, sorry deliberations. Yeah, just with um, staff schedules. It took a bit to get this back in front of the board.
Okay.
Well, no, we didn't have a board meeting during the fair and everything, so just finding a place for it.
I know. That fair, darn it.
No, it's good. We fit it all in.
A little busy, doesn't it? Anyway, okay, thank you for that. Um, now I can approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty three dash zero one eight by title only.
So that's a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Any other discussion? Saying none, Commissioner Dare.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
And Chair will vote yes. So this is the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty three dash zero one eight. An ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title twenty three, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan. To change the Comprehensive Plan Map designated for certain property from agricultural to rural residential exception area. And amending Deschutes County Code Title eighteen, the Deschutes County zoning map to change the zone designation for certain property from. Exclusive farm use to multiple use agriculture. Second reading in two weeks.
Great, thank you.
Item number nine deliberations. Uh, this was a remand of LBNW Plan Amendment Zone Change. Is there some? Okay.
Oh, yes, something that's a little bigger.
I have one extra copy if anyone needs another one for any reason. Sorry, just still getting set up here a little bit. Uh, good morning Commissioners. For the record, Tarek Rawlings on the Senior Transportation Planner with the Community Development Department. Uh, before you today is uh, the deliberations for the LBNW LLC Plan Amendment Zone Change Proposal. Uh, application number two four seven dash two one dash zero 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 eight eight one dash P A and eight eight two dash Z C. Those are the original file numbers. This was, this is a remand procedure. Uh, and the remand file number uh, filed this year is two four seven dash two three dash zero 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 three nine eight dash A. And this relates to essentially a, a plan amendment zone change from the existing zone. Um, district of exclusive farm use and the comp plan designation of agricultural to uh. The zoning designation and comp plan designation of rural industrial. Um, this was uh. The, following a public hearing a, a number of weeks back. And so this was basically prepared a, a decision matrix that should look somewhat familiar in terms of the formatting. For how we uh, reviewed deliberation issue areas. Um, it's a fairly large one. There's ten, ten pages or so there. Uh, uh, starts on page one twenty eight of your packet. Uh, uh, starts on page one twenty eight of your packet there. And if there were no initial questions, again, this is, the board's clarified that the scope of this um. Remand, including the deliberations, are limited to the uh, issue areas that were raised by uh, on, on appeal by the Land Use Board of Appeals. Uh, or Luba, otherwise known as. And uh, you've had the record is provided to you in this web link that's kind of throughout the memo and throughout a lot of these procedures and. Uh, materials. And so if there um, were any initial questions, I'd be happy to entertain those right now. Otherwise, um, we could start going down the uh. The matrix list just through the issue areas.
So I'd like to just take some time and kind of think big picture here about what this is. So this was a. An approval for a. Comp, comp plan change and zone, zone change from E F U to rural industrial.
Correct.
And um. And now it's come back. On remand saying the EC analysis, so did we do an EC analysis or not before? As in, we didn't even get to that, so. I got it all in front of me, but I just want to kind of work through.
Yeah, and that will come up in one of the issues area, areas at least, but we do have an existing EC. Goal five inventory that we currently rely on. It's from nineteen ninety four, but.
Yeah, so not for this specific application. That was kind of my thought process just now. So I'm just thinking about what an EC is and, and how does it pop up in this situation? So we have a, something we rely upon. We talk about a, uh, was a quarter mile on each side of the center line of the road. Right, and. Landscape management zone is what we're talking about here.
And exactly, the remanded issue dealt with goal five, which is uh, specifically related to the county scenic. Goal five scenic resources. So exactly what you're describing, sort of the scenic corridors on either side of, in this case, Highway ninety seven, which is recognized as a scenic highway. Um, and a lot of that is the, the landscape management combining zone that you're referring to. That's what the uh. Uh, current scenic resources are inventoried within, um, not necessarily that zone, but the EC analysis that supports that zone.
You're saying nineteen ninety two EC analysis?
Ninety two EC analysis. Excuse me, I might have said ninety four originally, but it, it was ninety two originally.
Yes, it was according to the letter.
So that, that's in place. And then having that EC analysis in place says you shall use muted colors and fencing. And there, there's some requirements that are fit into that.
Correct. Our, our current EC analysis has a, a program to meet the goal, which includes a, a number of mitigation measures. Um, related to scenic resources in this, in this instance.
So then on the remand, uh, the applicant provided a kind of a more site specific EC analysis?
Related more cer- certainly to the site, and we'll get into that in terms of what they've defined as the, the impact area. Um, there, there's also. Uh, it's their addressing of the new uses that may be added, which is also going to be addressed in the matrix. So they, in this case, they'd be adding industrial uses to this. Area that was inventoried in nineteen ninety two that may not have specifically addressed those uses. And so that's what a lot, most, if not all of what Luba was. Uh, remanding us on for, for that decision.
So then the EC analysis. Kind of starting point that was provided during our testimony. I just talked about cell towers and concrete facilities. And now that in the written record. From this, there's a much more detailed or expanded EC analysis.
Absolutely. There's, they've, they revised considerably and added a lot more detail, a lot more line item review of uh, each of the potential uses. The conflicting uses, so to speak. Um, they've uh, yeah, they, they, they went back several times to their consultant and then worked internally to really address kind of any of the issues. That were brought up around that analysis, how adequate it was, how it was identifying some of the um, key components within that law. And ultimately, that is largely what was remanded by um, by Luba was compliance with uh, an organ. Uh, and uh, an administrative rule related to that EC analysis essentially.
So then uh, the EC analysis is kind of. Pre-analyzing a future. State. As in, there's, there hasn't been a conditional use application. For any of those things, but now we're looking at what if.
Correct.
Out into the future. And there is a current building there and there's current. You know, commercial activity and I, uh, I even noticed there's a uh. Privacy fence, I think, has popped up over there too, so. Yeah. Just trying to understand, because as I say, uh, this matrix is kind of a. Mind mender. Uh, that's, that's really what I'm concluding. I try, you know, studying it. I'm like. Man, I need to be grounded before I even look at some of these things.
I uh, would agree with your characterization of the matrix. Um, the uh. Yeah, and so we have legal counsel and our planning manager here. If there's any questions on the nuance, this was a, something we had to really. Uh, very uh, heavily and very closely uh, work with applicant on in order to get this in front of you. So if there's any question whatsoever, we're here to um, clarify any nuance.
And that's good information. So applicant. Kind of worked through this process because they're the prevailing party and we're working in a, a remand. So the applicant's even been involved with this matrix.
They've, we've discussed a lot of these points, and so this is really as reflective as we can get of the applicant's position, I think. Um, at this point, it's all based on record, but it's, it's really something we've tried a lot to coordinate with the applicant on, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of think the big picture here before we get going into it.
Of course.
Any other thoughts or questions?
Well, I went back and reviewed their original letter from the twenty third of June. Yeah, that was one of my other questions. I was like, oh my gosh, okay. It, yes, it would be really lovely if we could get these, this size. Initially, instead of getting the teeny ones, because then I. You know, I could actually um, transfer my notes.
Sure.
I don't know if that's possible, but maybe Brenda it is. Cause it's, it's like a waste of paper. We get the teeny ones, but then thank you for this.
Sure.
As someone who likes to highlight.
Okay, well, let's work through a matrix and as I say, we'll see where we go with this.
Okay. Uh, sure, without further ado, the first issue area, um, and I'll mostly just try to. Like reiterate the issue area if there's any. Need for clarification on what the board's decision point is. I'd be happy to kind of read that initially, but I'm, I'm just going to kind of. Give, give as much space and time as you might need to deliberate on these issue areas. Um, so issue area number one, as you see on the uh, first page of your matrix there is, does Luba's remand require the county to conduct an analysis? Beyond considering the economic, social, environmental and energy consequences of allowing uses under the rural industrial zone. That differ from the uses currently allowed under the EF zone, EFU zone on the subject properties. And that is a really long way of asking whether the scope of this. Uh, the opponent has characterized this uh, scope of the goal five inquiry as broad. And the applicant disagrees with that characterization. Um, and so this is asking whether the board. Thinks that there uh. Needs to be analysis outside of the EC requirement or EC considerations. Um, and really the. Central question is, does the board agree with the applicant's testimony suggesting? That Luba's remand does not require more than an analysis considering the EC consequences of allowing uses under the rural industrial zone.
So yeah, certain direction to this is, is, I mean, it's just tricky. This is a tricky one. So I mean, because the question even says, you know, does. What do we think Luba was thinking? I mean, this is. It's kind of a weird question upfront.
I agree. Um, I think uh, there's. It's a, yeah, it's, it's, it's a. It's a discussion over whether this is broad or narrow. There's really no other um, input than that, I would say. Other than the broad the applicant has, has characterized as applying to the EC analysis and the EC scope. It's a. Kind of a uh, wordsmithing issue area thing. Um, I would say for lack of a better term. And looks like legal councils here, if you could do have any other.
Right. Stephanie Marshall, Assistant Legal Counsel. Um, and I appreciate some of the initial questions that um. Charita Bone had um, as we get into this, um. The intent of uh, presenting these uh, sliced, thinly sliced issues. Is to make as clear a record as possible uh, to support whatever decision the board comes to. Uh, because you know, uh, anticipating that this might be appealed again. Um, rather than having a remand, um, again, whatever the board decides, we want the record to. Show that, that each of the issues raised by um, Luba and raised by the opponent. And um, responded to by the applicant have been fully digested and considered by the board. Um, so with that being said. The um, this first issue is um, presented. For the board to have a response on the opponent's argument that. That the broad inquiry uh, means something beyond environmental, uh, social, economic and energy consequences. Does broad inquiry mean you're considering something outside of that? Or does broad inquiry mean that you have fully considered in a broad way each of the E S E E consequences? Um, again, uh, fully recognizing and acknowledging that um. You know, these, these issues, we've tried, you know, I believe staff has tried to boil these down in a way that are digestible. Um, and yet also responsive to the issues that have been put forth to the board. In um, in the testimony uh, and in the record.
So, oh, go ahead, please.
Hey, is there a geographic dimension to broad as we're talking about it right now? I mean. You know, are we, you know, especially if we're talking about scenic impacts, right? Do you, there's. Are there scenic impacts within, you know? What you can see just from as you're driving by at fifty five miles an hour on the highway? Or are there scenic impacts more broadly? You know, uh. Kind of at the landscape scale.
Um, thank you, uh, Commissioner Chang for that question. I. I would submit that that question is later in the um, in the matrix. Um, this really has to do, when you talk, when you reference just now scenic impacts. What is the scope of scenic impacts regarding, disregarding how broad of the impact area? What is, what impacts are we talking about? Are we talking about? Economic, social, environmental and energy? Impacts only? Or? Is the requirement that the board consider something beyond those impacts? That is the initial question. That we're asking in this issue one. Or that, that, that has been presented, not that we're asking, that the opponent has suggested there's something uh. When, when considering impacts, it's not just. Environmental, social, uh, economic and um, energy.
And does that set aside the question of how good our thirty year olds? EC analysis is. Today in twenty twenty three?
That's a later question. This really just is. What? What analysis need be made when you're looking at the? Broad inquiry. Is the board within, you know, does the board believe that um, or not believe?
Else needs to be.
Right, exactly. Does the board agree with the opponent's arguments or does the board? Um, believe that the remand is limited to a consideration of. Economic. I've, I, I, it's going to be hard for me to go through each of those four, but I believe that, you know, I'm trying to like pinpoint. Those, those considerations. Is there something beyond those considerations? E S E E? Is there something beyond those considerations that the board needs to make? Putting aside for now, the question of the impact area and the question of how well analysis might have been done. In uh, the nineteen nineties. It's just. Uh, what are we, what is the board considering? Um, what is proper, what is a proper consideration under this component?
So uh, I mean, the, the point would, I, I support the fact that EC is the tool. It's the vehicle we analyze these things. Very inclusive statements by saying uh, those four aspects, because that could include anything anyway. So I don't think we. I don't support going past the EC analysis. So that, I mean, it's good, uh. Good discussion here today. Which means yes.
Yes.
The board finds that the proposal does not require analysis beyond economic, social, environmental and energy.
I, I mean, I think EC, you know, those, those four things. Adequately capture the scope of what we should be considering.
We did it. We got to the first one.
Well, yes, I did say yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Stephanie.
I'm just going to be doing my best here as well.
Well, it'd help when you say thin slices too.
Yes. Yes.
As I say, you look at the big picture and then you study a part of it and then you look at the big picture like, oh, how are we going to get clarity on this?
Terry Quinn was a solar farm approved on Highway ninety seven?
That was uh, Cindy Smith, that one. I want to say it was like twenty ten or eleven, something like that. Do you know when this? We can look it up, but I think it was. Yeah.
We're talking in. Landscape and.
Right, that one, uh, it was probably around eleven, twenty to ten to twenty twelve, I want to say, but I could find out.
Water in those trees, right?
They're not. I look at them every time I drive.
I've always noticed. A couple of red trees out there, yeah.
Yeah, no, they, they definitely need some water.
Um, if that's all good on uh, issue area number one, I might um.
All in agreement.
Proceed to two. Yeah, thank you for the, the clear direction on issue one. Um, so just to frame issue number two, uh, is, the question is before the board, is the county required to amend? Or modify its goal fine, goal five scenic view inventory under Oregon Administrative Rule six sixty dash zero two three dash zero zero three zero? Or may the county rely on the existing inventory set forth in the comprehensive plan? This relates a little bit to what we talked about with how we have an existing um, inventory included in the comp plan that we currently rely on for certain.
So when we say inventory, I think, you know, things on a shelf maybe, is the, is the item? Landscape management at that point when we, the word inventory?
It's the, I believe it's referring to the actual scenic resources. So in this case, it would be the scenic resource within, you know, that buffer zone around a scenic highway. So they're trying to inventory those um, those sensitive or. Otherwise kind of protected resources in order to create a program. Um, to meet the goal five protections around those resources.
Then we're talking, so um. Is the goal five scenic view inventory as applied everywhere? Not just between Ben and Redmond then?
Well, and the scenic part is just a portion of that larger goal five inventory also includes wildlife considering.
Well, that's, yeah, see, that's fine.
Exactly. I just wanted to clarify that last piece.
Okay.
When was the last time that this inventory was updated?
It would be nineteen ninety two. We're still using that nineteen ninety two um, inventory.
So, and this is a open legal question? I mean, because it. Yeah, I mean, that's how.
If, if I may, Stephanie Marshall, again, um, this, this question is presented for deliberations. Um, uh, to respond to opponent testimony. So this is a question that's been raised. Um, by opponents, which is why it's presented as a decision point uh, for the board. Um, the opponent argues that the county needs to address. O A R six sixty zero two three zero zero three zero, which is the inventory process. Um, Commissioner Charita Bone uh, mentioned inventory as being items on shelves. These are the goal five resources that are, that, again, this is another thin slice of the onion. You know, what resources is the county looking to protect? And then the next step down would be, how does the county protect that? But are there additional resources? Is there uh, additional items to be added to the county's inventory? Does the county? Is the county required to revisit its inventory of goal five resources? And in this case, it's the scenic resource that was identified as a resource to be protected back in nineteen ninety two.
So then I would conclude that uh, this is part of our comprehensive plan, the big picture when, when we put on a work plan annually. Uh, through our uh, Community Development Department and the Planning Commission. You know, someday we'll open it up and, you know, look for, for edits and, and things we want to add or subtract or whatever. But I wouldn't put it as part of this application is, is the conclusion I would come to, if that's answering this question.
Yeah, it does. It sounds like you would answer yes to that question potentially if you're, it sounds like you would be comfortable relying on the existing inventory. If I heard that correctly.
Thank you, Dad.
So that's a, yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to put it in the big picture because this would be something we would do, but it's not because of this application.
And Commissioner Dare, that was a twenty fifteen land use decision for the solar farm.
Was twenty fifteen, okay.
Right.
Where's the water? Thank you.
I would say that uh, the landscape has changed dramatically since nineteen ninety two. And I, I don't think using a nineteen ninety two. Uh, scenic resource inventory is adequate.
But would the application, somebody's specific. You know, uh, comprehensive plan and zone request. Trigger us to stop? And do that project?
Well, the question is. Uh, the high level question is. You know, or the higher level questions are about whether. This. Application has. Application has substantial impacts on goal five scenic resources. And if we don't even have an adequate inventory of scenic resources, then we can't answer that question. Just the way I see it.
So, uh, so we wanna keep this two to one? Is that how you're saying no? And I think you concluded yes.
I said yes.
Okay.
We, we don't have to give it to it one. You can, you can decide that I, uh.
Well, no, I, I.
My interpretation is appropriate and you wanna, you wanna.
Yeah, that could, yeah, that's possible.
With me.
Yeah. Well, as I say, I mean, I explained how I saw this, you know, there's, there is a time and a place for that and it's the bigger picture. Uh, so that I come to the conclusion of yes.
Very good. Yeah, I've noted. I thank you for the clear.
There are rules that will apply to, um. And, uh, lessening the visual impact, I believe.
Through the L M zone and things like that. Exactly. Yep.
Right. We do have rules.
We do, for some, for the scene, for some of the scenic resources, exactly. Um, if that, uh, that was really helpful for issue area two, uh, thank you for the direction. We could move on to issue area three if there's no further question. And seeing none, um, I'll just read the issue area here. Are the conflicting uses identified pursuant to O A R six sixty dash? Oh, two, three, dash, zero, zero, four, zero subsection two. Those uses allowed under the rural industrial zone that are not allowed under the EFU zone. This is a, uh. An attempt to identify cleanly the conflicting uses that is, are required to be identified through the EC process. Um, the opponent, uh, more or less argues that, uh. There were not adequately identified conflicting uses. There weren't specifics on which ones were inadequate, but it was. Saying that the EC analysis was inadequate in part because of these conflicting uses not being necessarily well defined or identified. Um, uh, as Chair Dare or Commissioner Dare noted, there was, uh. Some revisions that were put into, or both of you had mentioned, there were revisions put into the EC analysis that were, uh. Made an attempt to address each of the line item, uh, rural industrial uses as conflicting uses. Um, and so kinda with all that information, um, the, the main question again, just related to the actual identification of conflicting uses. Is, does the board agree with the applicant's testimony, uh, that the county complied with that O A R provision? Uh, O A R six sixty dash zero two, three, dash, zero, zero, four, zero. Which is the EC decision process by considering as conflicting uses those uses allowed under the R I zone. That are not otherwise allowed under the current EFU zone.
So this kinda gets the substance of the matter referring to, would there be any conditional use as a rural industrial use that? Would trigger denial, I guess. I'm just thinking, you know, the outcome of this, um, because of that, I mean, uh. As I say, I rely on the fact that conditional use, uh, is gonna be a public process and it is in an L M zone. So it'll be acknowledged upfront, uh, and it'll be mitigated as per our rules. So. Yeah, I mean, I don't know how far. Far we wanna go with that.
Jared Bone.
Yeah, I'm just trying to use words so we can respond to it.
Yes, yes, yes. And, and I appreciate that. I actually, uh, would observe that you might be a step ahead. This, this, uh.
Thank you.
This. This is very thinly sliced. You can see through them. Um, this is really the question of what are conflicting uses? And are there additional conflicting uses that, that need to be analyzed beyond those that would be allowed? Outright or conditionally in the R I zone that are not currently allowed outright or conditionally in the EFU zone. So those, those we know are conflicting uses. Does the board find that there are more conflicting uses out there? Um, I, and I'm, I'm trying, I'm kind of almost speaking in, you know, less formal, uh. Word, wordsmithing here, um, just because, you know, these, these decision points are very dense. Um, so, so the, the decision point is, is it essentially, is the board, uh, finding that? Those, that, that, that universe of conflicting uses are those uses? That could now be allowed on the property that could not have previously been allowed under the EFU zone. Um, and, and is there a broader universe?
You're saying, so it being a half a step ahead is referring to.
Right.
The body of things that fit in those new zones.
Yeah.
That are fitting under an EC, is there anything else?
Right.
And I would conclude that there isn't. I mean, we've got a pretty tight system here already.
Um, uh, if I understand correctly, the basis for a Luba's remand to us really is about. Um, goal five scenic resources. I, I mean, I, when we first heard this application, you know, I have all sorts of concerns about. Uh, the way that we are thinking about agricultural land. Um, but it seems like that is outside the scope of what Luba has asked us to talk about. So. Um, I, I think those, you know. Uh, you know, within those parameters, I think we are looking at the appropriate, um, potential conflicting uses.
And I would agree, yes, it, there's definitely a lot of conflicting uses out there. So.
That sounds like, oh, excuse me, sorry.
No, just looking at, uh, the work from the original, um. The applicant from June reading what they presented.
Sure. So it sounds, unless I'm mistaken, there's three, that, uh, three votes saying that there's, uh, they agree with. Um, the applicant's consideration of the conflicting uses.
Yes.
Yes, very good. Thank you so much, commissioners. Uh, we'll move on to, uh, issue number four A. This is sort of broken out into three subsections, um. Uh, mostly related to, again, the EC review process and how, uh, the EC decision process and different steps within that. So. Um, four A here is, uh, what does the county identify as the impact area pursuant to? Oregon Administrative Rule six sixty dash zero two, three, dash, zero, zero, four, zero subsection three. This is. Uh, related to the identification of conflicting uses in that this is sort of a second or a subsequent step in that EC decision process. Where you're, where the applicant would have to identify the impact area. Um, the impact area in this case, uh, has been identified by the applicant as an area that includes all the properties west of Highway ninety seven. Within the landscape management combining zone between the sixty first street, uh, intersection and then the Tumalo Road, um, off ramp. And so that's been what they've identified as the actual impact area. So that's what's before the board really is. Do you agree with the applicant's, um, defined and identified impact area, which is that? Uh, the properties west of ninety seven and the.
Then opponent's testimony says the impact area must be larger than the three subject properties. So do they kind of both say the same thing?
It was, I, I, so the applicant responded to many of the opponent's original testimony. You'll see that the opponent's new testimony is almost. I think all of it is from their new evidence and testimony, but was presented as part of the public hearing. So the applicant still had a rebuttal period after that to address some of these original concerns. So I do believe that there, that within the revised EC analysis put forward by the applicant, they really tried to. Respond to this, uh, this comment from the opponent and try to, uh, define the, the, um, impact area a little more clearly. Um, and that's what they landed on.
Because I drive on that highway a lot and people are definitely not going fifty five. You can be driving sixty five and people will pass you like you are going backwards. So, yeah, widening that area, um, you know, what they've done. From sixty first to Tumalo Road seems to make sense.
Sure.
So the way that the applicant's EC thoughts are now framed. Is broader in scope than those three properties.
Correct, that, the, the defined impact area is larger.
Everything, I mean, everything west of Highway ninety seven, like, for miles and miles and miles or?
Zone, which is that.
Right, in the L M combining zone and then still even then between the sixty first street, uh, intersection and the Tumalo Road offering. That's the, um, kind of the east-west parameters of that.
Got it. Okay.
So the applicant's proposed impact area is that west side in the L M zone. And so I would conclude, yes.
Yeah, I, I would say yes as well.
And then is this, yeah, this will be. I mean, is that precedent setting, I guess, is my, you know, when I think about this, is that, does that mean something in the big picture of the world for other applicants or not? I mean, uh.
Well. Uh, th- this is such as a fact specific, um, determination that the board is making in the context of this application. And this analysis on this goal five resource in this area, you know, um, I, I.
I'll refer to it someday, but.
Yeah, possibly, but, but really you're looking at the impacts on this goal five resource. Of this proposed rezone and comprehensive plan. Um, so.
Do you confirm yes on that?
Yes.
I was just.
I did already.
That was for A. That was for A. Yeah, thank you very much for the clarification. We'll move into four B, uh. Next, um, so related to, again, the EC decision process, um. Four B, the issue area four B is, uh, is there a distinction between EC consequences and the impact area? Such that consequences may be documented outside of the identified impact area. So this is. Uh, fairly nuanced in that we've, we've now just identified and agreed with the applicant's impact area. And there, they've produced analysis that shows EC consequences. So potentially things that may result from this proposal being granted approval, but that. They've, they want, they contend that there is a differentiation between this impact area and maybe consequences that are outside of that defined boundary. We just went over and they, they, they want there to be clear. They want there to be clarification essentially in the record that, that you can have analysis related to EC consequences outside of that impact area. Even though you've defined an impact area on a different, through a different process or different step essentially.
So they want, they want, they want it in the record that there can be consequences outside of the, the impact area. And that's okay, or they, they.
That, that, the, that it was appropriate for them to analyze those consequences outside the impact area.
And that, okay.
Okay. Um. I, I mean, there. You know, I would want, I would wanna make sure that the analysis. Okay, so we're talking about both, both the scope and the adequacy of the analysis, right? So I might have concerns that, I might have concerns that the EC look that they've done outside the impact area. Um, does not adequately address the cumulative impacts on scenic resources in our community.
Exactly.
But that.
If I have those concerns.
In the later question.
I should, if I have those concerns, I should answer yes to this, that, you know, it's good to, it's good to look outside the impact area.
That's, that's a good way to ask that.
Okay. My, I mean, my answer is yes.
Which is that scenario of. Uh, land, uh, and elevation, seeing somebody's rooftop of, you can't see the mountains. I mean, there's some scenarios that were written up in the record there. That they were talking about.
This is largely, I think, responsive to those exact, um, pieces you're referring to.
So I would conclude yes also.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, commissioners. All right, moving right along to, uh, issue area four C. Uh, this issue area is can the identified impact area be amended at a later proceeding to match the EC analysis? Uh, the applicant believes that you, you can, um, amend the impact area, or excuse me, that, um, the impact area of their analysis can be amended. Um, in an iterative manner, um, at a later date. Um, so that's the position of the applicant. There's not really any oppositional comments related to this particular issue area. Um, but if it, it's, if, if the impact area needed to be adjusted for any reason, they're, they're seeking clarification from the board. On whether, uh, the board believes that that is possible at a later date or not.
Uh, so then, yeah, help me understand. I mean, are we talking about the, the county's nineteen ninety two goal five EC analysis? Or are we talking about something about this specific application?
It would be this, yeah, current one, current EC analysis.
When you say this EC, do we have a, an EC associated with this application now?
We do.
And remember, that was my question. Do we have one this whole time or do now we have to create one because of this remand?
We have to create one.
Yeah, so I, as I say, I just wanted to be crystal clear on this. Uh, so it was ninety two and then when we create a new EC for this. Is, are they in conjunction with each other? Or does it override the ninety two one for this specific application?
Typically, an EC analysis is prepared when a county or, you know, a county or city is. Looking to determine what development regulations might be, uh. Required in order to protect a goal five resource, whether it's a scenic resource or any other type of goal five resource. Um, and the EC analysis also informs a local government as to whether to allow a use completely. Not allow a use entirely or allow the use, uh, in a limited way. So those three questions on this application is informed by this EC analysis.
Okay. And then, uh, now I'm thinking the big picture here. So this is a remand from Land Use Board of Appeals. Uh, if we come to a conclusion here, does it get reviewed by Luba? Or could it be accepted locally if, if it's not appealed?
If it's not appealed, it becomes final.
So remand comes back, we say, okay, well, let's, let's edit it, let's come to a different, different final state of this decision. And that could be the final answer on this land use application.
Correct.
But then both parties could, somebody could appeal it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So what are the chances that it's gonna come back again then?
Well.
Who knows, right?
We don't, yeah, we, we're gonna put a nice, yeah, we're gonna put a nice package together, very business.
Um, probably, yes. Yeah.
No, we're gonna, okay, um, so then the second note under applicant testimony for four C, it talks about staff notes. Uh, the O A R states that local governments are not required to follow four steps in concluding an EC analysis sequentially. Are we referring to the four aspects of energy, social, environment, or are we, what is the four steps?
Uh, that's more, I would believe, like identifying the conflicting uses, impact area, um, the third and fourth.
Yeah, this is actually, um.
Okay, so it's kind of the table of an EC talking about.
Yeah, co- collecting info, information about the resources, determining the adequacy of the information. Determining the si- uh, significance of the resource sites, adopting a list of, okay, that's actually not even the impact area part of it. Um.
But that, okay.
So if we don't have to follow that sequentially, then we, then it's.
Can revisit it.
Go back and revisit the impact area.
That's, that's the question.
Is it, is it possible, uh? Uh. Under what circumstances could, uh, an applicant come back and dramatically shrink the impact area? Um.
Well, I, the board's decision on this application is informed by the EC analysis. That the applicant prepared and part of that reason is because when, when the original EC analysis was done in the early nineties. The possibility of R I zoning on this parcel was not considered because it was not in existence. That is really the main reason why we're going, the board is going through this process of considering. All this information to have a better informed decision and then to make findings and conclusions supporting that decision. Um, which we will have those decision points coming up. Um, and, and because Luba said there wasn't enough find, there were not enough findings to support a decision. Um, based on goal five impacts. That's why this is back to the board. I'm not sure I'm answering the question.
So we're really only considering, I, I mean, what we might anticipate is that we will only. See people who are seeking to expand in the impact area.
I think it's just, you know, can it, can it be amended later? I mean, I don't think that it's, it's specific to expanding or, or contracting. Um, you know, but it seems to me that if you've got a, a, a pool of, of impact area that's, that's being considered. Shrinking it doesn't really change that, and that, you know, the fact that that analysis has been made, expanding it would, would be additional analysis.
I support that EC is a tool for, for decision making and that that would come, lead me to the conclusion that in iterative manner, I mean, because if the tool doesn't work, let's update the tool to make sure we have everything included. So that would get me to yes on this also.
It may be amended. Yes.
Very good. And it could go anyway, any direction.
That's part of my concern.
Well, but I mean, it's a tool for us as decision makers to put on paper, you know, the applicant and everybody's got opinions about it, but it's to put it on paper. And then decisions are made.
I, I don't, I, I'm not prepared to give a yes or a no on this, on this question, so.
So we'll go with, yeah, two yeses, but I mean, if there's more discussion, that's fine also.
Thank you very much, commissioners. All right, and moving on to about halfway mark here, um, issue uh, five.
Stephanie, we'll be a little bit longer, but we'll get to you after this. That's the next agenda item. Just one person though, so we're good. It's not a room full.
Uh, well, thank you very much, commissioners and Stephanie. Uh, so issue five A, issue number five A is, does the county accept and adopt as its own, the applicant's updated EC analysis as appropriately documenting the economic, social, environmental and energy consequences of allowing or prohibiting the conflicting uses on the subject properties. Um, this is getting at what, you know, we've talked a lot about the EC analysis itself, and this is getting at whether the board accepts the most recent revised version of that EC as their own. Um, should this be approved or even just for uses of relying on the EC analysis?
So yeah, I did, I looked at it online. I didn't print it out. It'd get to be a pretty big document at that point.
Right.
Yeah, so I guess that's a starting point. So as I say, I, why I say that is because if there's a specific use or, or if there's any words in there to be debated, that we couldn't go that deep right now, because this is proposing to adopt that document as part of this decision.
Absolutely.
I, I think that there are a whole lot of allowable uses within the rural industrial zone. And I, I'm not comfortable that the applicant has parsed apart the kinds of impacts that each of those different allowable uses uh, would have.
Stephanie, is there any more insight you have on this one?
Um, well, I wouldn't make any comment because I'm, I'm intentionally not uh, um, stepping into your role as, as layers of the evidence. Um, you know, I would just, my elite comment would be um, in, in, in deciding this point, um, is there additional analysis? Does the board believe that there's more analysis that should have been done um, in the EC, updated EC analysis the applicant prepared? And um, uh, would note that there was an objection originally by the uh, opponent that they were all grouped together in ways that was not particularly helpful or perhaps not compliant with.
You mean the first response to the Luba remand?
Right.
And is it, yeah, because it now it expanded drastically after that.
So that's the, that's the question before the board is um, essentially uh, if, if the board decides yes, accept and adopt the updated EC analysis, um, that would be a decision that the EC analysis does um, appropriately document the economic, social, energy and, and, and uh, energy, environmental consequences of allowing or disallowing. Again, the EC does not make you make a decision on, on those last, that last question to allow or prohibit. Does the board adopt that updated EC analysis as the document on which it will consider in making that decision later in this matrix?
So a couple, couple thoughts, um. When I, I'm gonna go back to a big picture when we're driving between Ben and Redmond, right? I mean, you, you just did that too. So this was a uh, a rural agriculture, exclusive farming zone par- parcel with a small footprint of water and uh, other open space on the property. Part of farming is you could have a, you know, a large hay shed and equipment rolling around making dust, doing things. Uh, so then I think of uh, you know, right now, when you drive by, it's a, it's a large building with, you know, newer equipment for sale, agricultural based equipment. So I just, I kind of see it down the same path. Now we're analyzing what else could, you know, conditional uses could be. Which gets me back to the, the vision of uh, a uh, goal five scenic resource. So when I think of that, you know, when you're driving between Ben and Redmond or the other way, we're probably not going to see corporate towers or apartment buildings and parking lots. We're not going to see uh, uh, you know, the corporate headquarters of, of some big company there. So I mean, we're already kind of putting it down the path, rural industrial. And yes, it may be, you know, things on wheels rolling around, uh, or, you know, something at some height. But we're not going down the path of uh, you know, a car dealership. Uh, I guess we should be careful about what could happen there, but you know, I'm just thinking, we're not going to be big signs, big flashy uh, uh, balloon guys rolling around out there. Maybe that could happen too. But you know, I'm just saying, we're already doing a lot of good things to keep it kind of more agricultural, industrial. There's welcoming.
There's a pretty wide, or, you know.
Yeah, so I mean, that's why I had to stop.
You haven't mentioned some of them, but there's a, a, a wide array of things that are allowable uses in the rural industrial zone.
So as I say, that's why I was just trying, you know, it's probably not going to be a multi-stour, multi-store, multi-story glass building, corporate parking lot thing, you know, it's going to be more central Oregon style. Uh, and we, we also have, uh, you know, the conditional uses have been reviewed over the years about what a rural industrial. And this is evolving, rural industrial is evolving because of having a rural industrial in that corridor.
I don't think you can say that. I don't think you can say that there's not going to be uh, large buildings with lots of parking. Uh, until, in, unless you look down the list of allowable uses in the rural industrial.
Oh yeah, no, I agree with that. I agree. Yeah, I was referring to the vision of what, what I'm thinking. Yeah, so I understand, I understand what you're saying.
I mean, there's, there's what you can, there's what you, there's what you can imagine. Right? And there's what you can expect. And then there's what's allowable, an allowable use under the rural industrial zone. And there's a lot of things that are allowed under the rural industrial zone that are pretty visually impactful.
As I say, I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, kind of use words again, so we, you understand where I'm coming from, or you know, the world understands where I'm coming from. Uh, as we make these decisions. So. Okay, we were at what, five B? Sorry about that.
We're still on five A.
Five A, okay, yeah.
And I think, it sounds like Commissioner Chang is, has uh,
Yeah, okay.
clarified that he would answer no to that and that the EC was not uh, adequate, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't, I don't accept their analysis as ours.
Okay, uh, so any thoughts, Commissioner?
Well, it is theirs. And there are a lot of things when you drive down ninety-seven in that area. So, you know, I look at the crane company and then I look at the goat farm. So, I mean, you know, you've got got so much divergence there. Oh, hard to call it.
Well, so then, I mean, I almost might propose that we scroll through it. I mean, which would probably take an hour or something, but scroll through it as part of deliberations. Maybe we're not going to get landed on this. Because for me to accept that, as I say, I've reviewed it and I looked at it, but I didn't look at each line item and digest each piece. Uh, you know, it is kind of a big step to say, okay, what they've proposed is, is our decision.
Um, one more note, um, which is set forth in the decision point on this issue. Um, staff notes that the standard for an acceptable EC analysis is set forth in six sixty oh two three oh oh four oh one, which states the EC analysis need not be lengthy or complex, but should enable reviewers to gain a clear understanding of the conflicts and the consequences to be expected. So the question is, does this EC analysis enable you as the reviewers, as the decision makers to have a clear understanding of conflicts and consequences?
So uh, I mean, I, I mean, I kind of conclude that I'd like to review it more. I mean, and maybe it's uh, you know.
Wait, do we have time? We do have time to review it, correct?
Uh, we are on a pretty tight timeline on this one. It's got a hundred and twenty day remand deadline, which uh, we are right up against the end of, just for the first and second reading and.
Possibly reconvene this afternoon after more, you know, because now, now I kind of want to go into that specifically.
Yeah.
Could do it during lunch.
Yeah, however, the board would like to proceed.
I, I would like to do that. I mean, now, because as I say, now, this is, when I started, I said, this is a main, a brain, a brain bender. Now I've gotten through to this point, and now it puts it in more perspective.
Right, right. Um, so yeah, we have one kind of motion for no, that not accepting the EC consequence or the EC analysis. And then it sounds like there's two uh, votes to kind of bring this back at a later, just later.
Well, just, yeah, I want to study more, which means notice.
At one P M?
Yeah, whatever.
Well, we'll see. Let's, yeah, let's, can we proceed down the matrix with?
Certainly, we can. So there's two sub-questions for sub-question five that relate to uh, or excuse me, it's just two sub-questions. So there's only one other one related to the EC analysis, which is the next issue area, which was that, that does the applicant's updated EC analysis address the opponent's objection that conflicting uses were inappropriately grouped together? Um, if you needed to review the analysis for that as well, sure.
Come back to that one too.
Okay, so we'll come back on five A and five B later this afternoon. Um, that'll bring us to.
Proposal. We'll see if we get there, but I think, yeah.
Sure, sure.
Start off with that concept.
Yeah, uh, and then moving on to issue area six A. Uh, does the, this is also a very uh, big, high, high, high ranging question in terms of sort of over, overall approbability of this application or this remanded process. Um, the issue is, uh, does the board wish to allow fully? Allow in a limited way or prohibit conflicting uses under OAR six sixty oh two three zero zero four zero subsection five? Uh, the applicant recommends that the board decide uh, to allow the conflicting uses fully. And then the opponent has asked to prohibit fully. There has been no proposal for, on either side for a limiting option. Um, and that's pretty much all that's been in record for those um, three choices uh, related to this OAR provision.
So when it's, when their proposal is to allow conflicted uses fully, it sounds like a pretty shocking statement in this context of what we're talking about. But allow conflicting uses fully in a landscape management zone, goal five resource area with requirements of setbacks, color schemes, vegetation, all that, right? I mean, so I'm just putting, it's kind of steps back a half a step from doing whatever you want there to doing it in the landscape management zone with requirements.
That's true. Those requirements would still be in place um, on the, on the property.
We, we were just talking about the long list of allowable uses in the rural industrial zone. If we, if we chose to go with in a limited way here, um, could we either, either say certain of those allowable uses in the rural industrial zone um, would not be allowed? Or could we put kind of significant conditions on some of those uses that are much more visually impacted?
And I think the.
I'm gonna have Will.
I will.
Just because I'm tired of talking, I'll, I'll have Will, fresh voice.
Rose, your planning manager, um, I wanted to clarify, there's something unusual in this uh, in this structure that is uh, that you're seeing in the matrix. And Stephanie, jump in if I'm not getting it quite right. What the applicant has asked you to do is to find that there are no protections required or visual resources associated with the development. Because if you're identifying protection measures, you would then be coming in the EC analysis, remember you're allowing, limiting or prohibiting. And so the applicant says, is asked you to allow it outright. Opponents have asked you to basically prohibit the uses. And so to the extent that the landscape management zone remains on the property, which it does, the applicant hasn't proposed to remove it, it is not the program by which visual resources are protected on this property. It continues to incidentally be there, and it's an important distinction because to the extent the board says, I believe that, and Stephanie, jump if I missed this right, the extent the board says that, you know, that we believe that these uh, that this use would have visual impacts and we are relying on the landscape management zone to mitigate those impacts, that's a different decision than the applicants asking, the applicants instead saying that there are no requirements to mitigate these impacts. But you know, the LM zone will remain.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's not, you know, it's not a moving piece in this decision. So really important subtlety there about how the decision is structured.
And then is that a, the justification because it's a juniper sloped area up to visual housing and there's no mountain views? I mean, is, I, I'm just thinking back to what I've read here. Is that the justification?
Of the applicant's argument.
Yeah.
That the, you know, there's relatively limited viewshed at this point. And that, you know, when you're doing an EC analysis, of course, the board's welcome to choose anything. You are, you're asked, being asked to balance economic opportunity, you know, uh, use of the property versus this visual resource. And so it would be possible for you, even if there were significant impacts in your mind, to say the economic opportunity is more important. And the applicant's argument is that there's limited visual resources to protect and that moreover, the economic opportunity outweighs those as you weigh those in the EC analysis so significantly that you would allow those uses without any additional protections rather than impose some specific limitations on them.
Then are we getting down to the fact that, I mean, as I say, this is a, a narrower parcel with a juniper slope behind it and the, you know, the edge of the house roof is, is, and no mountain view. Because just north of there is a big open green pivot with mountain views right behind it. That'd be a whole different scenario than this.
Yes, site specific.
So, okay, well, that helps too. So then six A is, is it a site specific question and answer? I mean, is this for this decision?
Right.
Allow conflicting, conflicting uses fully, which is what the applicant's asking for.
And that's actually changing their position from their letter.
Uh, they originally had stated um, uh, to uh, support a limiting option in addition to the full, we allow, but um, they, yeah, so they've now um, urged the board not consider the limiting option in response to the opponent's arguments. Um, and the opponent has said that it's, it's all or nothing. Well, they didn't say it's all. They say it's nothing. Just to be clear, right, right. But this is a very site specific analysis. So when you're considering the goal five resource, which is the scenic view from highway ninety-seven, you know, what that view is over that other property with the pivots and all is, you know, will approval of um, potential approval of, of future RA uses on this parcel change that view from highway ninety-seven? That's, I mean, it's, again, there's lots of slices to this onion, but the goal five resource that was in, you know, inventoried and is sought to be uh, protected is um, the scenic view from highway ninety-seven, that view corridor.
And, and so if we were to accept the applicant's preference recommendation here, are we setting a precedent for other property owners who want to do a conversion from E F U to rural industrial to ask for the same thing? Essentially to say, yeah, the landscape management zone exists, but we, doesn't, it just doesn't mean anything.
Um, in that, in that instance, if the landscape management zone appropriately was applied to protect that resource, you know, uh, across that property, which that's the reason why it's back here is because we have the LM zone protections, but those were not considered on this property because it was not one of the pockets of RI zoned um, properties. And I, I, maybe I'll have Will jump in and, and try to, try to rephrase what I'm saying. Um, it's not a wholesale, like anybody can now say LM zone doesn't apply. Um, that's, uh, that's what I'm advising. This instance here, where impacts of zoning property, rural industrial on the scenic resource along highway ninety-seven were not originally considered. on this parcel of property because those R A zones were in pockets. So I don't know if there's nothing in the record to my knowledge as to how many other properties could, could benefit from a decision, um, in the applicant's favor, uh, to allow fully. I, I don't know that that information is in the record and so I could not speak.
It's a, yeah. Yeah, that specific info is not in the record, like which, you know, what parameters might fit this type of an approval. I don't think this is necessarily like a cookie, a cookie cutter type of analysis. You could really cleanly apply to any other, um, even groupings of properties that would be site specific to the point where I think even the EC would, would have to be substantially different depending on one, one property to the other. Um, uh, that would be my takeaway is that this might provide some sort of an example for someone maybe interested in applying for a rural industrial zone change, but that it would be, it would be so site, site specific. They would largely have to redo the whole EC analysis to reflect the history and the surrounding properties and the site itself.
And I would, I would, uh, also second that, you know, that this, if someone came forward with another similar application, you would again have an EC before you being asked to weigh the relative merits of the visual impacts or versus the economic opportunity. There's a variety of other considerations, social, but you know, that's, I think those are the headlines. The other thing I want to, uh, I want to try to state again, because it took me a while to get my head around this, is the relationship between this proposal and the L M zone. And it's really pretty unusual. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it again and see if it resonates. Is the applicant is asking you in a silo. So we're gonna take the L M zone and we're gonna put it over here for a second. We're gonna forget it exists. The ask, applicant's asking you in a silo for this application in this EC, are there, do, are there visual protections that are necessary for the traveling public with regard to these properties? And their argument is that you should conclude that in fact, no protections are appropriate or required because of the economic opportunity and other considerations are so significant. Once you make that decision, then you can note, you can, then you can come back and note that the landscape management zone isn't being asked to be removed from this property. It continues to exist on this property or continue to apply. So were you to make that decision, the landscape management zone would, you know, someone came in for a building permit, for example, it'd be subject to all the requirements that the landscape management zone implies on structures in that zone. But it's strange because the EC language is written a very particular way and you're being asked to make a decision in a silo. It doesn't rely on the landscape management zone and then, but also in the end, knowing that it continues to have some applicability. So you have to decide.
Right.
Without those protections, you have to say, you know, that this property needs no, the development on this property should be subject to no visual protections. And then a later step, you get to note that, well, there actually are visual protections, but you have to make that decision, EC process in a silo. It's, it's pretty unusual. Um, and one of the, you know, the difficulties that you're finding yourself in here is you've got, you know, of course, an applicant who'd like you to allow this outright. You've got an opponent who'd like to see you deny it. And the record has not been built for the questions that you're asking in some important ways or what a limit option looks like. You know, if you're gonna say particular uses might need particular protections, that's something that, you know, that typically you would need a record, you'd need a record to go through and build, you'd need to do that type of review. And it, you know, at this point it's not there and the calendar is very tight. I thought.
It would support a limited option.
Well, I would acknowledge that it's, it puts us in that same situation of wanting to answer the question of if somebody came in for a conditional use, how are we going to stop them up in, in the process before it even happens? Uh, and I, it always kind of ties me in and not thinking, ah, you know, let's not go analyze something that might happen in the future and say no before it even happens. Uh, so I always worry about that and that, and I, uh, as I say, there's a, a vision about what, what could or should happen out there and, and landscape management zone is going to be a part of any specific, you know, building, structure, development, conditional use. Uh, so I'm hesitant to answer this right now until, until I go back and study that EC to, you know, figure out if there's any parts, pieces of that that I want to, you know, edit or whatever we're gonna do.
I hate when you say it's in a silo. Yeah. Just seems, um, inappropriate. I mean, to me, visualization in our county with all the millions of people that drive up and down highway ninety seven, we have to be aware of it and and you could tell it really hasn't been, um, followed too much.
So you, you support kind of.
I want to come, I would like to, yeah.
Wait, well, on that one, sure.
Yeah, exactly what Will said, decision in a silo. No.
Um, this, uh, next issue area six B is very similar. So if there needed to be, uh, if we needed to come back on this one, this is related to, uh, more or less what Commissioner Chang just decided, and if, if there was a limited option to be chosen, um, uh, does the board wish to continue applying that landscape management combining zone to the subject properties? Um, if you feel comfortable, uh, deliberating on this, be happy to listen to any, uh, questions or anything, but we could also bring it back if that's the preference of the board.
Well, so this, uh, this conflicts, it, it, uh, it makes my head hurt a little bit. Uh, so so let's get back to what Will said. So if we do, you know, in six A, allowing conflicting uses fully, landscape management zone requirements would still show up when somebody comes in for a building permit. So then the next question, it says, the board wished to continue applying the L M combining zone to the subject properties, question mark? So I, yeah, help me resolve that.
This, this says if the board answered no, matrix issue six A. So if you answered yes, you can skip.
Yep, all the way to seven.
But if we answer yes, I'm, I'm living in a world there, you come in for a building permit and it's still required.
Right.
On six A even.
Six A would be, yeah, if you were to say fully, um, allow it fully, then this question of it, should it be limited or how would it be limited wouldn't?
Yeah, no, but I mean, it just, I'm working my way back to six A again though. So saying the words allowing conflicting uses fully means the full list of conditional and outright uses are available for somebody to come in and ask for, correct?
Correct.
And then once they go for a building permit, they're still going to have to follow landscape management zoning requirements.
Correct.
The color of the building, the fencing, uh, and some trees or whatever.
Setbacks and things.
So then, as I say, that now you look at six B, it asks the question, do we still apply it? We would still apply it either way, I think.
Think I understand this. And again, the, the difficulty here comes out of the structure of the statutory scheme.
Right.
For the EC language. I think the, the way I understand this is that the applicant's asking you to do this outright because that's the, in the statutory scheme, that's the relatively clean thing to do. Um, in terms of this, but it, what the matrix is then asking is if you'd say, no, we do not feel comfortable allowing this outright and, you know, relying on.
All uses.
Because we're not relying on the landscape management. So we actually do have concerns about the visual impacts. And we do want to balance those against the economic opportunities by limiting some options. The, uh, the matrix at this point is saying, if you said, no, you're not ready to allow it outright, it's asking you, would you like to point to the landscape management zone, basically import that program into this process to, as the basis for providing those protections? And then finally, uh, you can see this, the kind of the structure six C says, if it's not the landscape management zone, it's something else, um, would you like to build, basically, basically build your own protections in in step?
Okay.
And build sort of a specific landscape management zone for these particular properties, something that's really specific to the uses, the visual characteristics, the, you know, build something in particular. Um, the difficulty that likely would come out of that, and Stephanie can weigh in here, is that, you know, there isn't one built in the record at this point.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it would be, it'd be very difficult to build one in your order. And I don't know if we could build one outside of their, you know, a hearing record process. So, um, so.
So we might work our way back by concluding that no is going to be the answer. I, I would conclude no would be the answer on six C. Uh, but I'm not, yeah, sure, where I'm going to go with the other two yet at this point.
I think the pivot there is the six A is, if the six A is yes, then you know, you can move, you don't have to worry about six.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Six, if you're, if you have visual concerns at six A, then the question is, do you want to use the existing L M zone as the program to.
And yeah, so as I say, this all starts to fall in place after I go study the, as I say, the, the final arguments EC, which is very expanded, but now it matters a lot more to me now that we've gone through some of this.
Yes, yes.
For six A, we support a limiting option. It doesn't, doesn't mean we have to custom build this set of conditions.
Yeah. So if in six A, you say that you don't want to allow it outright and that you do want to, and you don't want to prohibit it outright, but in fact, you want to provide some limitations. That leads you into six B and C, which is either use the L M zone as it exists today as those protections or to build a custom one in six C.
I, I, I would agree. I don't, it doesn't sound like we have time to build something custom and uh, frankly, for one, you know, one application, I don't think that, that's a, um, efficient use of, of C D D staff time resources.
So yeah, let's not quite make a decision on that, but it's helping seeing where this is going to go now.
Right.
No, we have to be thankful then that we have the L M zone that we can import in.
Um, and does it sound like we want to bring back all six A, six P and six C in the afternoon? I mean, one leads to the other.
Five and six, it looks like.
Five and six, exactly. Sure. We can bring the, the whole thing back. It's got a ripple effect as you've sort of noted.
Yeah. So let's go through seven and eight and.
Sure.
Just because now it's, it's getting a little bit more clear, but now.
I appreciate patience. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, just skipping ahead to issue area seven A, this is on page nine of your decision matrix. Uh, that, oh, sure.
I think that the rest of these all.
Depend on your.
Yeah, uh, whether you, uh, said, yeah, allow or prohibit or, or, uh, limit.
So they're all going to fit into the reconvening.
These will all be, yeah, five through eight will be in the afternoon.
That's good.
Okay.
So we'll start at five then?
We will begin at five A, yeah, in the afternoon when you're ready for us to come back.
Oh.
So, uh, as I said, the proposal is that we, you know, get to the next agenda item and then reconvene on this deliberation this afternoon. So is one o'clock or one thirty or two o'clock more appropriate? Just second timing.
What do you think?
Well, depending on how long.
I mean, like a little bit longer then. So one thirty or two is what I would.
Thirty would be probably okay.
How about one thirty?
One thirty sounds.
Okay. Thank you for the flexibility on this. As I say, I was doing my homework and I was like, oh, I knew I was a little lost even, yeah.
You've done really well. Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate it.
Okay.
See you at one thirty then. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
So at this time, uh, item number ten, thanks for your flexibility. Twenty twenty-three spay and neuter grant program award recommendations.
All right. Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Stephanie Robinson, administrative analyst. I'm here this morning seeking board direction on final grant award determinations for the twenty twenty-three spay and neuter grant program. This program is offered to nonprofit organizations who provide spay and neuter services in Deschutes County for pets whose owners are unable to access or afford the procedure. And in June, the board approved a total of $10,000 in funds for this year's spay and neuter grant program. We opened a grant application period from late June to mid July. In the county received four applications from Companion Animal Medical Project, Embers Wildflower Animal Sanctuary and Bunny Rescue, Furry Friends Foundation and Street Dog Hero. Once we receive those applications, they were reviewed and scored by our dog board. Their scores were averaged to form a recommendation to the board on the dispersment of grant funds. And the summary of the funding recommendations was included in the meeting packet. And then I also provided each of you with a copy of the applications. Um, so I can turn it over to you to discuss, or I can go through each application and the award amount, whichever you would like.
For applicants, four different ways. Uh, any thoughts or if you want to study this more, just to prove it or?
We're not talking about a lot of money here, so I, I, I don't think we need to deliberate a ton on this.
It's a recommendation.
I just have a question about, I think it was street dog hero. They had a, like a net loss last year, maybe fifty some thousand dollars, but it's all at Warm Springs. So that's underwritten by somebody.
I, hmm, that's interesting. I know they provide, they go out to Warm Springs one or two times a year to provide free, um, spay and neuter procedures. So, um, that might just, I don't know, come onto grant funds or they're, they are going to use some of these grant funds for that program this year.
Okay. I mean, I just was.
Warm Springs or in Deschutes County, that's. Um, I, I think street dog here is a great organization, but you know, I know them first as an organization that is importing dogs to our community. Not as, uh, an organization that is, um, trying to, you limit, you know, undesired, uh, you know, population increase of, of dogs among, you know, within the community already. Um, so I, I, I just have a lot of questions about how they would kind of compartmentalize funding so that it was used, you know, in Deschutes County to address, you know, the, you know, essentially population control of dogs in Deschutes County already, as opposed to supporting, importing and more dogs uh, from, you know, all over the, you know, globally.
Mm-hmm. Um, so I guess in their application, so they did just create or like install a, um, clinic space in their bend location and they pl- plan to offer once a month, 20 slots per clinic for spay and neuter um, procedures. Some will be no cost and some will be low cost. And these funds would support that once a month too.
So yeah, I mean, for that amount of money there, yeah, this is just going to help. Yeah, some, any, any small effort is going to be.
It's not a lot of money. I mean, but I mean, it, it does, it does raise questions about, you know, well, if, if, if they didn't, if they weren't able to compartmentalize to kind of, um, serve Deschutes County, then should we be allocating more money to one of the other projects instead?
That was a question. Yeah.
That's the main reason I raised that question.
Commissioner Dare, did you have anything else?
No, I just, I just had seen their, um, you know, significant loss and I was just, their operating loss. And I was wondering if they could continue. So, um, oh, definitely, we can definitely keep that in mind for next year. Let's see. Hopefully things have turned around financially for their bottom line.
Well, and I want to thank the dog board for reviewing this and coming up with a recommendation. Uh, what's the, uh, what's the true up for general fund? Did you?
Yeah. So, um, general fund is funding five thousand nine hundred and five dollars. Yep. And then the donations made when residents register or license their pets was four thousand ninety-five dollars.
So I move, um, recommendations based on the dog boards awarding the twenty twenty-three span neuter grants to the program applicants.
Second, any other discussion? Thing then, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes.
And thank you for the orange file.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I mean, I guess, you know, so the, the, the concerns, questions I raised, you know, kind of like, how do they compartmentalize? How they make sure that, you know, this is, this is going to benefit, um, you know, benefit Deschutes County, you know, uh, help us control, um, unwanted dog populations in Deschutes County. Maybe they could just, you would just convey that to them that I, I had those concerns and they want to respond. You know, I'd be, I'd be interested to hear what assurances they can give us too.
Perfect. I'll do that. Yes. Thanks.
Other items?
Actually, just a.
Oh, follow up. Okay.
Commissioners, for the record, uh, Whitney Hale, deputy county administrator. I think, and Stephanie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we could, if the board wanted to, um, sort of make that part of the grant agreement, that funds would be used for procedures or occurring in Deschutes County. And I think that, um, if that was problematic, we could also look at adjusting the grant amount if. And I think that, um, if that was problematic, we could also look at adjusting the grant amount if that, if they felt like that was too much, too many funds to. Uh, perform procedures here locally. So if that's of interest to the board, it's certainly something we could look at through the grant agreement process.
Our dog is being neutered, um, as we speak and the.
Today's the day, huh?
Poor Jake. I was like, really, Bob? Anyway, the quotes for neutering. Five hundred to eight hundred dollars. I mean, unbelievable. So what is, how far is twenty-six hundred dollars going to go?
Yeah.
Uh, so I mean, I'm not too strong about it just because of the smaller amounts. If it was anything larger, we'd.
Yeah.
Okay, so no need to worry about it.
Sounds good. Thank, but thank you for, yeah.
Other items, anything?
Not at this time, there may be one after the last agenda item today.
Oh, uh, I'm thinking we're, you know, that we're done with our regular agenda here. So you're saying after our deliberations this afternoon?
Yeah, yeah, Peter might have an, might have an update after CDD related.
So, uh, for clarity, you know, uh, I talked about it earlier and, um. I'm going to go speak at the Redmond Rotary and there's a request, you know, to talk about the east side of Redmond. And, you know, I've been kind of a proponent of maybe there's a thing, maybe there's a thing out there. Could be called the long-term visitor area. Is there opposition or support? I mean, I'm not trying to be controversial here. I'm talking about ideas. So, so is there clarity?
Day was if it's your idea and you want to present it as your idea, um, that. All power to you.
I actually got in an email this morning from Mayor Fitch and we're going to have a conversation tomorrow, I believe, before. The meeting, um, just talking about the forty-five acres and what we have up there, so.
So it might boil down to, for clarity for us as a board, would that forty-five acre, and we may be kind of done this. Would that forty-five acres be available or for something? As I say, it's just ideas at this point. Or do we want to hold on to it for other purposes? You know, and I don't, maybe we don't, not ready for that decision because. You know, I've been at the Oasis Huddle meetings and I've been up in Redmond talking to folks. We've committed to ten acres, which turned into twelve acres, which now we have a lease agreement on. So we have. And we, and we want to do a land swap, I think, you know, there's the support for just doing a land swap, which means DSL is asking us to. Uh, uh, you know, not have unsanctioned campers and have it cleaned up. So then is that forty-five acres available for, you know, part of this whole thing or not?
Possibly.
Yeah, so. And we can probably just leave it there at this time. As I say, it's just ideas. It's the the discussion and.
We definitely need to help, um, facilitate the land swap. So I, yeah, it definitely can be discussed.
I mean, if if you're, if the Rotary folks asked you to come and talk about. What can be done about homelessness in East Redmond? Uh, there's a whole lot of things that can be done. We've mentioned some of them, the, you know, Oasis Village, the other ten acres. Um, something could be done on the forty-five acres. Uh, I I still think that, uh, since this is. Land exchange is of great interest to the fairground, the fair and expo. Uh, they should be at at minimum considering, you know, offering some of the space for safe parking there. There's, so there's a lot of things. So I I, you know, I I. Just want to emphasize, if you want to talk about your specific idea. You describe it as your specific idea that has not been vetted with the board yet. Uh, and one idea among many for how we, uh, you respond to homelessness in East Redmond.
And that's exactly where I'm at. So it's really interesting to get. To unders- I mean, it feels like there's tension on this, but it's just an idea. So I don't understand.
Well, you know, if you, if you, if you push and push and plug one idea. Uh, and you're not talking about the other ones, then it gives people the impression that. It's the, it's the main idea that is being, uh, moved forward in community.
Okay. So yeah, as I say, I've attended the Oasis Huddles with the new mayor. We are referring to this, this last year. I'm fully engaged with all the service provider providers and partners that show up at all those meetings and I've been doing it all year long. So I'm fully informed of the big picture and I do this in light of Oasis Villas. Uh, moving forward and, you know, the requests and we've all signed off on a lead. So. As I say, I mean, I'm I'm taking offense that I'm not looking at a big picture. I am the big picture. No, so.
You are the big picture.
I have the big picture there and I'm always going to speak in that context.
Well, again, the the idea that you want us speaking depth about. Is your idea that has not been workshopped with. The full Board of Commissioners with community partners, um, and.
Yeah, so I don't.
We are coming back at one thirty. So could we, um, adjourn now and then?
Okay.
Back at one thirty?
So, yeah.
That would be great.
I mean, does that help? Because you.
I I have a follow-up question, but if the board.
We'll do it later. Okay.
We can talk about it under other items.
Thank you so much. We're going to reconvene at one thirty today. Okay, so, uh, welcome back to Deschutes County Board of Commissioners Meeting. This is extended deliberations from item number. Nine this morning and thanks for your flexibility, everyone. I think we'll go right back to.
Sure, uh, yeah, for the record again, Tarek Rawling, Senior Transportation Planner with the Community Development Department. Um, we are coming back for, um, extended deliberations on issue areas five A through eight. Uh, eight A, I think it's just eight. It says eight A, but there is no eight B. So I believe that's the only one. Um, so there, uh, just beginning where we left off at five A, that issue area reads, does the county accept and adopt as its own? The applicant's updated EC analysis as appropriately documenting the economic, social, environmental and energy consequences. Of allowing or prohibiting the conflicting uses on the subject properties. Uh, just kind of back in the record, um, Commissioner Chang had initially. Um, voiced, uh, a type, maybe the, maybe the beginning of a decision, basically saying no. Uh, to the, uh, response of the board decision points and, um, in the far right. Uh, column, but we could pick up, uh, right from there if you would like, just to, if you have any questions, just let us know.
Well, um, the original, um, record had the Skidmore Consulting Analysis. And what this did was actually take that. And take it on to forty pages worth of analysis and as the last paragraph says. Um, this exhaustive list provides a sufficient detail to consider the economic, social, environmental and energy factors. To balance in making this decision regarding the proposal and landscape management, road goal, five resource. That's the very last thing that they stated. It's in, it is in, it's exhausting. And I was doing like cross referencing, you know, is this what they told us before that we were looking at? And yes, it is, but it's way beyond. So.
Now, after spending more time studying this in detail over lunch, I I'm still not, uh. Satisfied with this product, um, if you're. Uh, it gives a lot, an exhaustive list of uses, but then it sort of. Lumps them all together and just keeps saying the same thing over and over again when, you know, for example, uh, you. That there, there are many, many places where, uh, we need to differentiate between these different uses and and their impacts. But, you know, saying that a, a, a concrete plant, you know, doesn't use any more energy than. Any of these other industrial uses, uh, is grossly incorrect. I mean, is that, you know, and then somewhere else, I think, I believe it was like on, you know, on a pulp plant, it said, oh, well, this actually uses a lot of energy. But I, you know, a concrete or cement operation is, um. A massive energy consumer. So I, I mean, I, I just feel like this was done. Um, kind of in a, in a sloppy way. Like I, it it wasn't done as thoroughly as I would want it to be done to actually differentiate between these different uses.
No. Uh, so, you know, when I look at an EC, it's, it's a tool, uh, it's supposed to be, uh, you know, input. It's a shame we don't have like multiple. Multiple, uh, points of view creating it, uh, at this point, because this is an applicant's created document. And when you look at the positive and negative, uh, consequences and these different, uh, attributes. Man, you could take it in a whole bunch of different ways. You know, when I see pulp and paper, I think water. Uh, you know, that's just a highly watered, not that we would do that at this location, but, uh, anybody. Probably never be financially feasible, but, uh. It's water. It's not even in, you know, probably energy as much, but, uh, it's just interesting.
But it didn't say, I didn't address that during the environmental impacts, um. Question. Yeah, a pulp plant is a, is a. Potentially very large water consumers.
Yeah.
You know, I, I feel like this was done in a kind of like a cursory way.
Well, so then I would acknowledge, I mean, this is the applicant's point of view, not wanting to expand probably on some of those or not needing to. Uh, and, uh, you know, if there was a big. Community discussion about what should be in the EC, we could be studying it forever because there would always be difference of opinion. So. Um, getting back to the question, this is part of a, uh. Application that I had concluded to, you know, support in the past. And now the CC analysis is provided to us as part of this package. So, uh, I, and then, uh, the opponent, it it does resolve the opponent's arguments. Uh, you know, the opponent's arguments were referring to those to comply by not analyzing of each conflicting use, uh, and, um. Inappropriately grouped uses. So it does resolve that. Uh, so I would conclude that I would support this as part of our work product and there might even be some slight edits. I I just know. Notice one typo in there anyway. So, you know, as part of the final package, you know, and we've done this in the past where. Uh, you know, if there's specific words that need to be changed, we'll acknowledge it in front of everybody too. So I do support that.
Very good.
EC.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I know, and I was cross referencing at one point, it didn't say what it had said in the original, but yet then when you got to that appropriate spot, it did. It did match, you know, at the terminology we were given before. So. Anyway. Forty pages.
And just, um, so it sounds like there was a, still a continued no from Commissioner Chang, a yes to that answer from Commissioner DeBo and I was, uh, maybe just a. A clear yes or no from you.
Yes.
Chair there. Okay, very clear. Thank you very much. All right, and, uh, moving past, uh, five A, we'll move into five B. This is, uh, related. Uh, to the EC analysis again. So, uh, the question before the board is, does the applicant's updated EC analysis address the opponent's objection? That conflicting uses were inappropriately grouped together. And it's.
Yeah, and I kind of answered that for myself as my statements previously, but that that does.
I was going to say, there's a lot of what you had just, um, deliberated on that answers this one. So I, without putting words in your mouth, though, it would be, uh, great to have. Some clarification maybe on this particular, um, y- yes or no, just on the question whether, um, whether. The conflicting uses are or are not inappropriately grouped together. Um, it sounds like you had said that, uh, you believe they were inappropriately grouped together, if I'm not mistaken. Okay.
Uh, well, yeah, so how do we answer in this question? So does the applicant updated analysis address the opponent's objections? The conflicted uses were inappropriately grouped together. Uh, so I say, yes, it it addresses that. And we, you've gone the other way on that, we're saying.
So if that's the question, then my answer is no.
Yeah, excuse me. Sorry, yeah, the right wording. Appreciate that.
As, yeah, to rec- what I just said, it's an exhaustive list. Might not like how it's all put together, but it is definitely exhaustive.
Well, yeah.
And with that, that's a yes from you then, Commissioner Dare. Thank you very much. Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, so moving past five B, we're on to. Uh, Matrix Item Six A. This is a kind of the large question again of, um. About, uh, how to potentially permit these conflicting uses. So the question before the board is, does the board wish to allow fully? Allow in a limited way or prohibit conflicting uses under OAR six sixty dash O two three dash zero zero four zero subsection five. And again, the applicant has, uh, recommended allowing fully and the opponent has, um, recommended prohibiting, um, the uses. There's not, um, a, a lot of, uh, analysis currently for the limiting option, or at least the most current, the most up-to-date recommendation from the applicant. Um, is for the allow fully. There's some analysis in the past for the limiting option, but they've, they've pivoted to the, uh, allow fully. Uh, so. And I'd be happy to frame the decision point question if that would help at all.
Sure.
Um, just in that, yeah, so the, how we've worded is consistent with the applicant's testimony. Does the board find the conflicting uses should be allowed? Uh, fully pursuant to subsection five C of that OAR we referenced. And that's in line with the applicant's recommendation.
So, uh, going through the EC, uh, and, you know, expanding out the, the proposed possible.
And I, sorry, there was one, I just wanted to note similar to the last issue area or couple of issue areas ago. Commissioner Chang has already weighed in on, uh, preferring a limiting option unless something has has changed with your analysis, but that was also just noted from, um, previously.
Yeah. And this is, this is a big pivotal point.
Yeah.
But as I say, looking at the conflicting uses, the the listed out uses, um. It talks about a couple of these things with, uh, no outside storage unless enclosed by set obscuring fencing. Uh, forty-five foot, uh, height limits, uh, you know, so basically, and it was valuable going back and looking at this because. This is all, this is rural. It's, you know, our whole. Code package is built on rural. Uh, so this is rural industrial, you know, change of use. But existing rural industrial from historical, we have these, uh, kind of the commercial. Service centers or whatever. I don't know if there's rural industrial there, but my, it put it in perspective, the fact that everything we do is rural. Uh, and so these conflicting uses, the ways they're written, it already says sites obscuring, site obscuring fencing, uh. Um, excluding open outside storage, uh, you know, so it's already written. Kind of in the context of being, um, you know. Controlled for visual impacts, uh, as I say, the height, uh, height limit forty-five feet also. So that, you know, that's valuable to be able to see that and kind of think that through also. Uh, so. Allow conflicting, conflicting uses fully, uh, I could support that in knowing that there's. The landscape management zone still for when you go in for a permit.
Very good. Thank you for, uh, that position.
And thank goodness, we do have the landscape management zone. So I, I could say, yes.
And Commissioner Chang, did you want to still, um, go with the limiting option then? Perfect. Thank you for clarifying. Okay, we're moving on to, um, so because the board, majority of the board has, um, answered yes to six A. We actually would move down to Matrix Issue Number Seven, seven A. Um, really, six B relates to limiting options, six C as well. So we're. Down to seven A now, which is on page nine of your decision matrix. Um, so if the, uh, this issue area reads, if the board elects to allow the conflicting uses fully, which they, uh, just have. Um, additional findings are required pursuant to Oregon Administrative Rule six sixty dash O two three. Dash zero zero four zero subsection five subsection C. Does the EC analysis demonstrate that the conflicting use is of sufficient importance relative to the resource site? Um, the, uh, board has, so just to the decision point column there, the board has an answered yes. Um, in the, or answered affirmatively to Matrix Issue Area six A. Um, allowing the uses fully. So does the, with that in mind, does the board find consistent with the applicant's testimony? That the EC analysis demonstrates that the conflicting uses, um, are of sufficient importance relative to the resource site?
Uh. This is your weighing opportunity. Is this, is your decision, uh, supported? Do you find that your decision is supported by the EC analysis, your decision to allow, uh, fully?
Uh, so as I say, a moment of clarity again, you know, the fact that the breaking out. Uh, so as I say, a moment of clarity again, you know, the fact that the breaking out each one of those out and seeing that some of those already have words in them about set obscuring fence, fence and no outdoor storage and height limits, uh, shows that that does support the conclusion that I came to here. If that answers it.
Some things were already allowed, which was interesting in here, even, um, they were even allowed on like EFU, the dog kennel perhaps. So I, I thought this was actually very, um, hopeful, worthwhile, and the depth was good.
And so just to clarify, would that be, uh, two yeses from, uh, Commissioners DeBonne and Adair on this particular issue area? Okay. And Commissioner Chang, happy to hear your thoughts.
No.
Sure. Okay.
Six A.
Exactly. Just to, um, keep, keep everyone in the loop here. I appreciate your, appreciate the clarity. Okay. And that brings us to, uh, issue area seven B. And we are on the last page of the, uh, matrix today. Uh, so.
I do want to make note because they just asked for a sub, extra seven days in order to get that EC analysis done.
Right.
Cause I was wondering, gosh, what took us so long? But, you know, they had asked for seven days more.
That's correct. That's one factor. Sure.
One of the factors.
Yeah.
One of the many factors.
Um, yeah, if there's no other questions on seven A, be happy to move into.
Well, I guess, I guess, yeah. So seven A, I'm still kind of digesting it. Uh, it was kind of my earlier comments, the fact that this, you know, as a work product of the Board of Commissioners for a decision, uh, it could be more robust. So I, I don't know if we, where we would go with that as in it'd be interesting to have somebody, an opponent review it and say, why don't you add this? Or could you add this? But I don't know that we're there and I don't know that's you're gonna mess this up. But I mean, I, I could see that, you know, that would really make it a vibrant discussion. As I say, I I don't know, and we don't need to go anywhere with it, but I'm just letting, putting that on the verbal record of today's testimony.
I thought the, um, video of the highway ninety-seven, I thought that was really an excellent addition. And I would actually want to slow it down maybe. So, you know, you could really see what's, what's there.
Sure.
If that's possible.
It might, I mean, at this point, it would, it would likely be their record to a higher hearings body, but that's a really good point to make in deliberations. I'm sure they're listening and might, might make that adjustment just so it's easier to see.
Okay. I just, you know, I thought there's always the value of a picture.
Sure. We're speeding up like we're driving seventy.
They're doing, I mean, people are driving seventy-five, so maybe speed it up.
True.
You're right.
Um, sounds like we might be finished with seven A discussion for now. Um, so moving on to, uh, issue seven B. Uh, and this still relates to the, that same subsection of the OAR we were previously talking about, um, continuing to stem from OAR six sixty dash O two, three dash zero, zero, four, zero subsection five subsection C. Does the EC analysis demonstrate why measures to protect the goal five scenic view on the subject properties should not be provided? And you've weighed in on the adequacy of the EC analysis overall. This is more or less nuanced. Uh, thin slice of that larger issue.
That was a great.
To use a popular metaphor.
Um.
Gonna get out my mandolin.
And the.
In support of the, yeah, the logic path I'm on. So I would say yes at this point.
Sure. Very good. Thank you. And really just, yeah, for the, for the record, really the decision point kind of framed for the board is, does the board find consistent with the applicant's testimony that the EC analysis demonstrates why the measures, uh, to protect the Gulf I've seen a view on the subject property should not be provided as this allow fully option goes. So thank you, Commissioner DeBonne.
Yes.
Okay.
No.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Chang. And thanks, everybody for the, uh, patience with this overall process. It's been a big one. All right. And we are now at the last, uh, issue area here, um, issue eight A or just eight, um, we, uh, this is a large issue area as, as worded. So if the board decides to fully allow the conflicting uses, which we just did, um, O, OAR six sixty, O two, three, zero, zero, five, zero subsection one requires the county to adopt comprehensive plan provisions and land use regulations to implement the decision made pursuant to OAR six sixty, O two, three, zero, zero, four, zero subsection five in compliance with OAR six sixty, O two, three, zero, zero, five, zero subsection one. Demonstrated by the applicant's consent to the subject properties continuing to be subject to the LM combining zone land use regulations because there are no proposed amendments, uh, to the comprehensive plan and the land use combining, land use management, landscape management combining zone, land use regulations before the board in the application. And, uh, we'll, we'll, I feel like we're gonna have to pull that apart a little bit here. So, yeah, uh, if there's any, uh, initial questions you might have as to how that was uh, worded and what that means, uh, we are here to discuss, but essentially it was that we've, we start with the board's decision that you've already allowed. Um, voted to allow the uses fully, um, pursuant to that OAR provision. And so uh, the question really is, you know, consistent with the applicant's argument, does the board find that compliance with that subsection O, zero, zero, five, zero subsection one is already achieved because the land, because the applicant consented to the subject properties remaining in this LM combining zone? Um, and that means that all that needs to, uh, that's required from the comprehensive plan provision, uh, and any kind of land use regulations are already in place through the LM zone and some of the other provisions you've discussed today.
So, uh, could an applicant say, I'd like to not be in this zone? Is that the flip side to this?
They, there's discussion in record that they have not requested that specifically, which implies that they, they may have been able to request as part of some sort of zone.
That's just, yeah.
But that was not part of this request, just like you noted.
Yeah, their last paragraph says they, uh, specifically is consent to the subject properties remaining in the LM zone.
Right.
Well, so the whole mindset I have is that the LM zone is an overlay. It's existing, uh, and it's a kind of a hard requirement. You don't ask to get out of it. So I don't know if we're answering that question or not, but that, and that was my other.
Yeah, it's.
Conclusion.
It's largely asking if those, if those, um, provisions, those protections that are already in place just through site zoning and things like that, will that achieve the compliance with that OAR provision? And it's ki- kind of sounded like you were heading towards yes on that.
I would say yes.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you, Commissioner DeBonne.
Maybe if they were not able to even analyze the impacts correctly and accurately, I don't think that they can achieve compliance.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Chang.
And I'll say yes.
Okay. Um, thank you very much, Commissioners. Um, that is, that's really helpful just for us to form some findings around. Um, this is uh, kind of a, a tight timeframe as we talked about before. So we were gonna have to go over some scheduling really quick. Um, there's a, a first reading and a second reading required as part of this process. Uh, those are, uh, also required to be two weeks apart from each other. And so reflecting the overall approval and, um, other deliberative points of the board, it sounds like the soonest we could come back with, um, findings and materials for a first reading would be, uh, the excuse me, August thirtieth, Wednesday, August thirtieth, um, and then two weeks later on September thirteenth would be the second reading. That's our tentative um, schedule right now. That puts us exactly one day before the September fourteenth, hundred and twenty day deadline. So this is really close, but we could, we've been coordinating with the applicant on this, um, timeline for a, a couple of months now, and they're aware of how tight that is, but um, that just as laid out would, would comply with this hundred and twenty day timeline and, and we're coordinating with the applicant right now on, on how those findings are gonna look, basically coming back to you on first reading. Um, but that would, those are the dates that just would have, um, if, if you have any thoughts on those or, uh, it were, we don't have a ton of options. I will be, be frank, but those are kind of what we've tentatively lined out. That would be a working timeline.
Uh, yeah. So I'll acknowledge that, uh, we will respond as we can and make sure we fit the timeline.
Right. And those dates sound tentatively fine. No, no big conflict, sounds like.
Okay, thirteenth is Wednesday, right?
That is a Wednesday. Yep.
Okay. So we should be okay then, hopefully.
Yeah. And we've checked with Board Sec- Secretary. I don't think there's any, um, huge conflicts or absences, um, for those two dates, but that, we're still just running this by you, full transparency and coordination. So, um.
Yeah. So September sixth, I plan to not be in here, but that's the one date.
And we, yeah, we've been made aware of that. That was great. So, yeah. Um, so if that sounds okay, I think we'll, we'll, um, see you back here on the thirtieth then in a couple of weeks.
Uh, so do you want to do some miniature motion? Cause I know this happens. Sometimes the media is like, well, did you pass it or not? It was approved or not? So.
Yeah.
Need a motion?
Yeah. I mean, just kind of a.
Yes, you, well, Stephanie Marshall, legal, assistant legal counsel, um, the board should consider making a motion and voting on a motion to approve.
Yeah, I saw it. Yeah, just let's do that then. So.
Um, I move to approve the remand of LBNW LLC Plan Amendment and Zone Change Application. Uh, two, four, seven, dash twenty-one, dash zero, 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 eight, eight, one, dash PA, eight, eight, two, dash ZC. And then it's referenced in parentheses, two, four, seven, dash twenty-three, dash zero, 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 three, nine, eight, A. And, um, for the line amendment, zone change, um, remand. Approval.
I, I won't be voting to approve this application.
So I'll second it. Understood. Uh, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
No.
And Chair votes yes. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks so much for the, for your time today. Um, and we'll see you on the thirtieth.
Anything else? Other items?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Two items. Peter, I don't know, Getowski, Community Development Director might have one item, just provide a brief update to the board.
Yeah, thank you, Nick and, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Peter Getowski, Community Development Director. I wanted, uh, let you know that CDD wants to bring back an item for discussion and direction on August thirtieth, and it pertains to the Historic Landmarks Commission. We've had a robust recruitment process for months now. And, uh, we only have two candidates or two applications that have applied for three open positions. And I think as you know, Tanya Saltzman's been before you. We're not getting the level of interest, um, and really the level of activity, uh, that we've seen in years past pertaining to historic preservation in the rural county and as it relates to the city of Sisters. So quick, quick refresher Deschutes County is a certified local government grant. We have a historic landmarks commission that, uh, uh, provides guidance and technical input on historic preservation matters in the rural county and in the city of Sisters. There was a point in time when Deschutes County as a landmarks commission provided services to the cities of Redmond and Ben. They've, oh, this has been a decade now. They've, um, uh, detached themselves from our process and created their own historic landmarks commissions and their own ordinances. And in part, that's due to the fact that when you establish your own program, you're eligible for state funding and every eighteen months you get approximately ten to twelve thousand dollars. We're at a point now, you know, we've engaged Kelly Cannon Miller, the Schutz Historical Society, Society. We're at a point now where I think there needs to be a, a real con- honest conversation about whether we can really even proceed with a landmarks commission going forward. And we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that in more detail on the thirtieth. Um, we've, we, we have three vacancies, like I said, and we just, we're just not seeing the level of interest and involvement. And so I just wanted to prep the board for this conversation. Um, we've done everything we can with May Preservation Month promoting these opportunities. We extended the recruitment. And, um, it, it's difficult honestly to, to promote historic preservation in, in, in the rural area. Um, approximately, if you were gonna, if you had asked the question, how many counties have a historic preservation program and operate as a certified local government of the thirty-six counties? Uh, Deschutes County being one of them, we might be one of two or three counties that has a program. So there's a reason why counties don't find themselves in historic preservation. We don't historic districts, people can walk around, we don't necessarily have downtowns, our neighborhoods that, that allow, uh, people that value historic preservation to access it and to see it from public rights away. So it's gonna be a difficult conversation. Um, and I just wanted to prep the board for that. Um, we have some ideas about, you know, what we can do, uh, in the event that we receive a, uh, proposal for an alteration or modification for historic structure. We don't get very many of those. We haven't had one for approximately ten years and the ones that came through were in Sisters because of, there's a few historic structures that are in their downtown areas. So just wanna prep your, prep a conversation with the three of you that the conversation's gonna get complicated and maybe making some, some changes to our program, uh, that, uh, set it aside for a while. Of course, it's ultimately the board's call. Don't want to get ahead of that, but it's time to have, uh, a difficult conversation about what it means to have the Historic Landmarks Commission, um, active as it pertains to rural Deschutes County issues.
Peter, remind me, how many times do they meet a year?
We've scaled it back. Uh, if we had a, right now, we don't have a quorum.
Right.
Um, we would typically meet quarterly. We haven't been meeting, uh, since we received the certified local government, since we've had some resignations. If we try to have a meeting in May and then there was resignation and all of a sudden we found ourselves, uh, not having a quorum.
Yeah, I mentioned it at the Historical Society Board Meeting and a bunch of people like, oh, that's interesting, but yeah, no response.
No response. And we want to be honest and, you know, if for volunteers, you want them to be active and engaged and you want to have a program and uh, we're struggling to have a program right now.
Yeah.
But and, and Peter and I've talked about this and it's not that we wouldn't have a program. It's that in so, a lot of local governments, the planning commission serves in that capacity. If you're not able to find qualified or interested people. So again, Peter will bring back options for the board's consideration, but, uh, absent applicants, w- we can't staff the landmarks commission. And right now, for example, the Community Development Department would be in, um, would really experiencing, would really experience significant challenges. If you had a historic preservation application for an alteration for a, we've had the canal designations, whatever the case may be, if you don't have a body that ha- has a quorum, we're stuck. And so it's.
We would be relying on some, as I look at Kim and Stephanie, some creative legal interpretations.
Yeah.
Get us the ability to provide that review. That's gonna be one of the, one of the items that we'll talk about is potentially amending our codes. So we don't have to get creative interpretations, um, to the extent that so- something like that happens. And then, um, we can talk about, you know, what it means to have a historic landmark commission today, but also what it means where it could, where it could be reconvened tomorrow. So, uh, anyway, didn't wanna, didn't wanna surprise you on a, on an August thirtieth meeting of, of, of this topic. Just thought it would be helpful to debrief you ahead of time about what's.
Well, we just need some hot topic like the, like the park out here or when the, when the Oddfellow cabins were going. I mean, there's always, you know, something that'll bring them in, but we just don't even have that right now.
It's difficult. You, we, right? We don't have, we don't have historic historic parks. We don't have his, we have historic districts on the national register, which those are canals, um, but those were executed through the National Register of Historic Places. So it's it's complicated in a county like ours. So thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. I was just gonna say, and Oregon's complicated because I think it was the late nineteen nineties or early two thousands that the state legislature changed the law. So now property owner consent is required to designate. And so there's not a lot of people are going to step forward and say, sure, please put more restrictions and regulations on my property. Um, and limit what I can do in the future with it. And so it's, it's, Oregon is quite unique in that regard.
And when we first established our program.
Yeah.
I don't think the county was forcing properties to become historic, but there wasn't that, uh, change in state law at the time. So Nick is exactly right that, uh, you need owner consent, uh, to, to have a historic, uh, structure or landmark. And we're, we've, we've promoted the program. We've done everything. We, we have a strategic plan and we just haven't, uh, for, uh, we're at a point now where we're just not not for the lack of, of trying. And, and, and so Tanya Saltzman will come back on the thirtieth. She's our liaison and has interfaced with the landmarks commission. So want to honor that responsibility for her. Great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Peter.
Hey.
I, I had a second. The second item is to go back to the discussion we had earlier, the long-term visitor area, the LTVA. The question that staff that we have is if, if a majority of commissioners, a majority of the board wants staff to develop a concept of what a program could look like, we are.
We are available, we, we will do so. If a majority of commissioners are not interested, then obviously we will not. So it's just not clear to staff if there's a majority support for, for beginning this conversation. Or if it just remains at this point with the chair and your, uh, proposal to, um. What your, your proposal at this point. So I just opened that up for the board. Uh, I'm just seeking your direction, whether we expend staff resources or not.
So we're, we're talking, calling a, a visitor area, but is this really for, um, an area for homeless people? I mean, is that really what you're talking about? Or you're talking about a visitor area?
So I can talk about it a little bit here. Uh. So we're gonna do Oasis Village, which is gonna be, uh, uh, tiny shelters. And we've done, um, Veterans Village, which is tiny shelters. Uh, City of Bend has some other, uh, efforts going on. And, uh, there's also, uh, on top of that Oasis Village, the campground, you know, uh, people, a place for people, uh, managed. Um, low barrier, whatever it's gonna be. I, I've kind of, I think a, 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 a future path would be if we had a place. That was a little even less structured, lower cost, minimal cost, a permit required. You have to sign a piece of paper to be there. If you're not gonna break the law, you're gonna follow some simple rules. You're gonna have trash collection available. That will give us a deterministic situation where we can ask people to not be on, on the land of the east side of Redmond. But also Redmond, the city of coun, city council of Redmond can proceed with, uh, not having people live, uh, unsanctioned camping. On the roads. So it would just be in the mix and it's an idea at this point, you know. So, so Nick's asking if we want to proceed and design the solution. Uh, and I'm gonna have a step before that myself right now. I want to kind of float the idea, make sure Redmond is on board with it. Uh, Sid, the mayor and I've sat by, side by side many times this summer and it sounds like it resonates. So I don't see any negative on this. So as I say, my, my thought is just to, you know, proceed as if. And it sounds like it triggers people because I'm talking as if we're gonna do something, uh, but. The intention is to offer a place for people. We would put the rules around it. So you're asking a question, but you and I would put, you know, the three of us would put rules around it. Uh, you know, is it a place for people, a place that you have to be, you know. Offered to be there or can anybody show up there or, or, you know, the parts and pieces of that? So I haven't put that down on paper yet. I mean. I could, and that's kind of what you're asking for, you know, let's get down to a design.
I, uh. There's a lot of stuff that we need to be researching. There's a lot of stuff that we need to be. Uh, advancing forward if it's a viable idea. I am open to a, a, a objective analysis of this concept. Uh, you know, if that staff wants to do that, that is, uh, that's great.
Well, that would be asked.
But I, I don't, you know. I would object to presuming that, um. That there's one particular way to use the forty five acres. Um, and that we should. Proceed as if it's going to happen. Um, I would prefer for us to. Take that concept and, and you flesh it out and rigorously analyze it. Uh, assess the potential fatal flaws of which I believe there are a number. Um, and then make a decision.
We're talking the forty five or the, or the ten.
Forty five that's unallocated, un, unspoken for. And remember, it's not even partitioned off or anything. I mean, it's just land that's out there.
Right.
It's just the, the bottom edge of the hundred and thirty acres we want to swap and the top edge of the twelve acres we've committed to.
Right.
You know, and then side by side.
Right, we did talk about doing something with that, um, earlier. We were hoping to get people off the property that we want to swap with the state, so.
So the other thing is, uh, you know, Oasis Village, they're gonna work on putting utilities across the road here in the next two months or so. Oasis Village can proceed here pretty soon. We just finished the, uh, contract with it, which means it'll be.
Very soon.
With that.
Must proceed very soon in order to be able to use the funds from the governor, you know, from the state, uh, before they expire.
So then, uh, they'll be running water over there, excuse what I was gonna say, you know, I mean, so there's an infrastructure piece that's gonna be showing up in that general vicinity. And it's not worked out yet, but at least there'll be something there, uh. You know, why wait till next summer when maybe things could fall into place, you know, kind of parallel this fall or, or in the winter? And as I say, I'm not taking it any farther than that. I'm just trying to look for opportunities for action.
No, um, I think it's great. I'm actually talk, I'm meeting today with Ed and Kat and, um, Keith about. Redmond. They wanted to meet with me before we have our churro meeting tomorrow, so I'm gonna do that. Um, I, I know that those forty five acres, I want to see what they say, because they definitely represent.
Yeah, no, that's great.
They represent Redmond, and I do not want the teeter totter to just go down to Redmond, you know, with everybody down there. But definitely, um, I feel that, you know, it's an asset that we have that we could, we could, we can utilize. And, you know, the sooner we do in a, a study to utilize it, I think it's really important, but I would really like to talk to those people today.
Well.
And I did, I did talk to them Monday, I talked to Kat and Catherine Monday, I saw them Monday night, but we didn't really get to specifically talk about this. So, um, I'm really happy you're bringing it up. I think it's, it's good.
So remember, just a couple of months ago, uh, Christie, our property managers in front of us saying. Yeah, we're not gonna be able to get to, to, uh, Redmond this summer because we have to deal with Juniper Ridge because we have a code enforcement case. So I'm still respecting that too. That's why I'm not coming in saying, stop everything you're doing, let's go do this. I mean, I'm trying to respect the fact that there's step one, there's step two. Step one is, is, uh, uh, Juniper Ridge at this point. But I want to prep for step two. That's my mindset.
Step A, step two A is to actually do a study and analysis rather than. Presume that we're gonna do a specific thing and.
Well.
Charge ahead planning.
So now, I mean, think about, you're pushing my buttons by saying that. Do you intend on doing that?
I, I, I thought that was what you were just asking, whether we want to ask staff to do. Do we actually want to look at this objectively? Or do we want to presume that like one use of those forty five acres is the right thing to do without any analysis and charging?
Yeah, so we're, we're just seeing the world differently. Uh, I, and we're truly just using different terms too. I mean, because I think our goals are the same, the objectives are the same, uh, action is, is out there somewhere. Uh, but by your saying, let's study the problem, really kind of pushes my buttons. Uh, and just, I want to be very businesslike about this, but. Yeah, we've known we had a problem for years and this is serious business.
Businesses do business plans. They do fatal flaw analyses.
Yeah.
Uh, before they go and expend a whole lot of resources. So if you want to be businesslike, that's what we should do.
See, uh, okay.
Um, could I do that? Could I just say something? Someone had suggested to me the other day that Reno had a really great plan. And that we should really look at Reno. So I went, I Googled it and it ended up Reno had a hundred people die in one year. I think it was in twenty one or twenty two. They had a hundred homeless die. So their count really, and I'm going like, so it's, there's always like. When you have to analyze, you know, like somebody really thought it was, what they were doing was great. And then I looked at that and I went, well. You know, we've, we've got the winter coming on and winters are seven times more deadly, even though we're dealing with all the smoke and everything and the temperatures right now. But, uh, winter is really much more critical. So if we can do some kind of study, I'd love to talk to those people today.
Yeah, oh no, this is gonna be great.
Yeah, listen to what they're saying and because we all know we have a problem.
Yeah.
We know it's a huge problem and we know that, um, we, um. We really have to get something accomplished. So I'm, thank you for bringing it up.
Well, I was just saying, I'm looking for common ground. It sounds like we've got a lot of common ground here. I'll leave it at that.
Can I say something? I need to.
Sounds great.
Um. You guys all saw where St. Charles is talking about dropping Medicare Advantage, which. Uh, in our community, Central Oregon covers the twenty seven thousand, twenty six thousand people. So I just had an email, um, a minute ago from, uh, Dr. Divya Sharma, who's on health council with me. And she, um, I'm gonna give her a call this afternoon and we're gonna have a conversation about it. But I do have my hospital board authority meeting Friday morning at eight. So I've been telling people if.
That's just once a year, right?
Yes, and normally it's in May, so it's perfect. They did, they didn't do it in May. It's, um, yeah, it's this Friday. So I'm very, uh, delighted about that. But if anybody has any concerns in the community and they want to pass something on to me before Friday morning. Um, please do so. I, um, I recognize somebody on our facilities review committee called me up after the meeting and said. Oh my gosh, that is my insurance. I don't want to lose it. You know, it's like an HMO with vision, dental, et cetera. And so many people in our community are dealing with so much financial stress at this moment. To compound it with their healthcare plan at this moment, I, it really feels incredibly unfortunate. So, you know, working both sides of it, I did talk to Pacific Source yesterday. Um, you know, they're trying to get something accomplished and there are other insurance companies involved too. I think if you read it, it's Humana, it, there are other, but they cover fifteen thousand. So just if you have any feedback, please let me know.
I mean, my first thought is, you know, uh, as the local public health authority, are we in the mix here at all? Because this is, this is big, uh, and I don't, I'm not expert in it, uh, but Medicare Advantage and then, uh, dialing it back to Medicare. This is gonna affect a lot of people. So I'm, you know, maybe Nick, you can ask, uh, you know, Janice. I mean, is there any real domain for us here? Or is this, you know, kind of state and federal law and not, not us as a local public health authority?
Well, it was interesting because Pacific Source came to me last week, because I'm on the health council. And, and then I actually talked to St. Charles about it. So trying to get them together if they would. You know, communicate together and maybe there is something better that can be done that's, you know. That will make the plan better for both sides.
So, uh, as I say, I mean, maybe it's just an email to us explaining the lay of the land, you know, if, and as I say, maybe it's not our domain at all. Or maybe there's something we can be involved.
Well, we definitely could facilitate. I've been, I've been trying to facilitate.
Yeah.
The good news is I did have a relative on the board for St. Charles. And he did call me back right immediately. So thank goodness.
On the St. Charles board?
Yes, he's the vice president.
During.
Well, he's the vice.
Covid and nobody, I couldn't get a hold of anybody.
No, he's, he's a vice president, so it, um, perhaps I'll see him Friday morning.
You want to talk to another insurer, uh? I was talking with Cherie from Bancorp in, fine about this very matter yesterday. She had some concerns. Uh, Bancorp is one of the entities that, that offers Medicare Advantage.
Great, good.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else?
All right.
None.
Meeting adjourned.